Okay, we are ready to get started. So if everyone would take their seats, we are ready to get started. Former Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. This is the City Council's work session. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice to the public and to council that we may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Please stand if you're able.
My pleasure to be here, to the United States of America, and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff, Mayor, is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by the native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, moving down to open call to the public. I don't have any cards up here, so I don't think that there is any open call to the public. It does appear at the end of the agenda as well. Item number five, review of draft agenda for the March 4th, 2025 City Council meeting. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Moving right along, item number six, February work anniversaries.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Joanne Keen, Deputy City Manager, covering the work anniversary presentation for February, for Shannon Anderson, who is still, she's actually covering another meeting today. Just a reminder, we go through our work anniversaries for those employees celebrating one year, five, 10, 25, and sometimes we've had anniversaries up to 40 years for the city. We will not have those today, but we have some pretty big ones. Just starting off, these are the employees celebrating one year with the City of Flagstaff. You'll see they kind of range from departments all across the organization. Events and marketing, Parks and or Pro's, Public Works, more Pro's, Public Works, and Management Services. All of these employees are celebrating one year with us today. Celebrating a five-year anniversary is our airport director, Brian Gall. I think we've all been spending quite a bit of time with Brian recently. He's been presenting quite a bit. We've been spending time in budget meetings as well, so congratulations to Brian for five years with the City of Flagstaff. Jana Weldon is also celebrating five years with the City of Flagstaff. I guess we'll give Jana some applause. Rose Tohe is also celebrating five years with the City of Flagstaff. Mayor, I'll let you shut that down if you need to. I'm not going to do it for you. Rose is our Indigenous Affairs Administrator. Also celebrating five years is Jessica Herbell. She's a Recreation Official with the City of Flagstaff in the Pro's Division. Celebrating 10 years is Brianna O'Connor, who is a firefighter/paramedic. Now we have a 25-year anniversary, so today we are recognizing Pedro Sanchez III. Pedro has worked for the Flagstaff Police Department for 25 years, and he just entered the drop program and plans to do another five years before retiring for good. He was born and raised in Flagstaff and went to Coconino High. I'm sure there's some cheers for that, maybe not. Pedro had always wanted to be a police officer since he was very young. He started with the Flagstaff Police Department in February of 2000. Throughout his career, he became a field training officer and helped train new officers. He was a school resource officer and taught the Dare and Great programs in the middle and elementary schools. He became a motor officer and worked in the traffic unit for several years, and he's currently assigned to the Flagstaff Airport and plans to finish his career there. Pedro has been supported by the love of his life Stephanie and his two daughters. Pedro loves to fish, and his hobbies include storage unit auctions, garage and yard sales, and a few hours at the casino. During the next five years, Pedro plans to find his retirement house in a nice beach town on the East Coast. Thank you, Pedro, for 25 years for the City of Flagstaff. I'm not sure, is Pedro in the room? No? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to, oh, he's at the airport. Okay, so our next employee celebrating 25 years is Jeff Bowman, who is our Transportation Director and Traffic Engineer for the City of Flagstaff. He's the guy that gets to tell us whether we can raise our speed limits or not, right, Jeff? Yeah. So Jeff is a, actually, City Council gets to make that decision. I just wanted to point that out. Jeff is a valuable resource for the city, and without him, the city would not be where it is today with regards to transportation issues. He has given of himself to the city for the past 25 years, and the city is better off because of that. He provides great support and mentorship to those he works with. Most of all, Jeff is a great friend and is always ready to try a new recipe for a dessert or dish to share with the office. I did not know that. Some of the key transportation items include wayside horns and quiet zones, several iterations of the engineering standards, partnering with ADOT on state and city roadways in Flagstaff. He's planned and delivered projects in partnership with the Transportation Commission. He's researched and introduced traffic roundabouts. He's been at the forefront of implementing complete streets. He's developed the Active Transportation Master Plan and has worked on projects and policies with partners like ADOT, Metro Plan, and Mountain Line. Congratulations and thank you, Jeff. Jeff, do you want to make a couple of comments?
I know, this morning. Yeah, you want to say let's be limited?
So, did Joanne say that you were responsible for roundabouts?
I think so. I think Reed and I brought in the first, the first roundabout on Woody Mountain, I think, are Reed and I's fault.
I just want to know who to forward the emails to.
I usually see them, thank you.
I love roundabouts. Let's put that on the record right now.
And we're kicking off another one next month. Four-seater locket. Yeah, it's going to be super exciting. Thank you, this was really nice. Thank you, team. We have an awesome team here. It should be easy, I started in 2000, to know that this was year 25, but it surprised me a little bit. When I started, I always, I was thinking about 25, it's like, man, those guys are old. I've been here for 25 or 30 years. I know, I don't want to offend anyone over here, but it doesn't feel, 25 goes pretty fast, and I don't feel that old. You don't feel that old. It's been wonderful. The city's been really good. I've, you know, I've met my wife, I have three kids here, actually only one left here in town, but been a great, a great time working at the city, a bunch of really good people, a bunch of great projects. We have a really exciting couple of years coming up with that roundabout, John Lee Powell, a bunch of Butler projects. It's really, really an exciting time to be in transportation, so couldn't get here without tons and tons of support. Most of them are back here making noise. Thank you, gang. It's been good. Thank you.
Jeff? Jeff, one minute. Councilmember Aslan has a question.
Hi, Jeff. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have a pop quiz for you.
All right.
Wondering if you can rifle off the names of all the mayors you've worked under.
Um, Mayor Daggett?
Rank them in your, like, your favorite.
Oh, yeah. Mayor Daggett.
We're going to need to go into executive session.
I don't think it's been that many, but I, let's see, Mayor DC?
Well, then name them.
Mayor Neighbors, Evans, Donaldson, Presto, that's one I couldn't think of. Thank you. Yep. And Bavacy for a very short time. Did I miss any? Okay, with help.
That goes back quite a ways.
It goes back quite a ways.
Good job, congratulations.
Thanks.
With that, Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to do a special shout-out to Jana Weldon, someone who I have worked with over her entire time here at the city, and I have watched her grow and helped the city grow as well. She did a lot for diversity, inclusion, and equity, as far as making extra panels to add transparency to the process, and her statewide connections made municipal public art connections throughout Arizona, and her time here at the city has been invaluable. Thank you very much, Jana, and good work.
All right, we are moving on to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. The report this time touched on a couple of quick housekeeping matters, but dedicated the bulk of the report to a summary of the awards. I'm going to stay with the theme of employee recognition this afternoon. We had the City Managers Excellence Awards at the Orpheum Theater recently. Many of you attended, and thank you for that. So this is for the benefit of those who didn't attend, and really, the community, everybody. It was wonderful, it was well-attended. We had such a nice lineup of award recipients covering, there are three categories of the awards that we do, Oak, Aspen, and Ponderosa, and there were great recipients covering many attributes in all of those. I'm not going to belabor, it's all in the report for you, with some really great photos as well. I do want to touch on the Ponderosa Award recipient, Captain Casey Gonzalez, and he is joining us today. I thought I would put him on the spot and give you a little background about Captain Gonzalez and what he has accomplished. He is the recipient of this year's Ponderosa Award, which only goes to an individual each year, so it's the highest award, and really something, a prestigious award and quite an accomplishment. And there is a photo of Captain Gonzalez with me in my office, took that recently. So here we go, and forgive me in advance for reading this, but that's what I'm going to do. When the IT Division took over supportive public safety, and we did this a few years back, the public safety IT, the systems in place had an identified gap in dispatch for training, IT upgrades, CAD mapping, fire-specific projects. This gap existed for a long time. Routes and response plans for the fire department were out of date and could lead to life safety issues, of course. The city's IT Division had taken over the CAD and support for the 911 dispatch system. This brought about many new and unexpected challenges, coupled with the dispatch center hit hard by turnover. Council probably recalls those discussions a few years back when we had a significant vacancy in our dispatch center. Captain Paramedic Casey Gonzalez, a dedicated first responder with over 15 years of experience. I believe he was being recognized recently for his 15th anniversary. He came to the senior command staff and volunteered his expertise to assist in filling these gaps that I mentioned. Casey agreed to transition from the rigors of shift work to address the critical gaps in the 911 dispatch system as a fire department partner to both dispatch and IT. With little direction and oversight, Casey embarked on a mission to build bridges between multiple divisions within the city, county, sheriff's office, regional fire departments. He was able to collaborate with IT and other cities around the state to learn the fire CAD system inside out. He did this on his own initiative. With a keen understanding of the challenges faced by both dispatchers and emergency responders, Casey leveraged his frontline expertise to streamline protocols, response criteria, enhanced training, and foster partnerships that ensure, pardon me, ensure timely and effective responses to emergencies. Independently, he took an insurmountable task and not only mastered it by revising the fire response plans, but he went the extra mile by learning the ins and outs of dispatch, improving the software for fire dispatch in ways that were never even thought possible. He solved issues that had existed in the system for years that end-users just accepted as the way it had to be, and he increased efficiency in IT and dispatch substantially. The funding, that was, pardon me. This is what happens when I read. That is the narrative. It's an impressive story about self-initiative leadership and innovation, creativity, to solve problems, and to do so while he worked collectively, did so without any direction or oversight. He was on his own on this, and he had accomplishments to show for it. So it was with that narrative that Captain Paramedic Casey Gonzalez was given the Ponderosa Award, and I would like to recognize him and invite him up to have any words he would want to share with you. Thank you.
I did come prepared. Don't want to just wing it. So for those that were at the award ceremony, it's going to be of a similar vein of what I spoke about there. So I just want to take a few minutes to pass on some thank-yous and thoughts about it, about the award. Like I said, similar to what I said at the award ceremony, and so my apologies to those that have already heard this. But to start, by thanking the City Managers Office for selecting me. Thank you to the nominations that came from multiple departments, divisions within the city, which is awesome to have that recognition come from multiple areas on what is being accomplished. And then there's also dozens of people across the city that are doing work that deserve recognition or similar recognition. And so to be selected, it's an honor with that. So thank you to the City Managers Office and City Manager Clifton. Thomas Edison said, "Opportunity is missed by most people because it is dressed in overalls and looks like work." What I shared with the group at the award ceremony was to think about thin threads in your life that have put you in the positions that you're in and give you those opportunities that are before you. Nothing in the world happens in a vacuum, and that's certainly true of the work that is done to earn this award, or that was done. I can look back and see all the thin threads in my life that came together for this opportunity, and I want to share those and give some thanks along the way to those that were involved. First, the thread of my father. He loves baseball, it's a great game. He was my coach growing up. The beauty of baseball is both teams get the same number of outs. There is no time clock in baseball. So as long as you have outs left, there's still a chance, so never give up. A beautiful thread, the beautiful thread of my mother, who died of brain cancer two and a half years ago, that, sorry. No matter your lot in life or where you're from, if she was with you, you felt like the most important person in the world, period. She just loved people, and so I encourage people that, just love people. The grounding thread of being raised in a house of faith, I'm far from perfect, and people know that, but I was raised by parents and grandparents who taught me, I'm a sinner saved by grace, and I exist on this earth for something greater than myself, so seek to serve others. The thin thread of my prior experience, over 15 years in public safety, always saying yes to new trainings, new challenges, always wanting to learn more. Don't get complacent in what you're doing. You never know when the things you're learning today are going to be needed down the road, so always keep learning. The strong thread of my family, my amazing wife, my two inspiring, beautiful, loving daughters, that no matter what the crazy task was, they've always been there for me, even with my slightly unhealthy work-life balance and the career that I have, I wasn't always there for them. I love those three ladies unconditionally, and nothing worth anything can be accomplished without sacrifice. Brings me to the threads of the people within the city that have been part of the progress that's been made on this project. First and foremost, the dispatchers, past and present, that show up day after day, 24/7, slugging it out up in the dispatch center, on the phones and on the radios. For a long time, they've kind of been fighting with one hand behind their back, but they show up every day, they keep getting up, coming to work, and doing their best to get the calls out and take the calls and get the response going. So, an applause to them, to the dispatchers. The talented IT Department, CJ, Sean, Allen, and all the others that I've interacted with. Sean Armour made the decision to give a non-techy firefighter free rein on a CAD system. I'd break it, call them up, come help, they'd fix it, let me do it all over again. Thank you to the two dispatch centers, Mesa and especially Tucson, that opened their doors and shared freely of their knowledge to an outsider and taught me how to make this old beater of a CAD system work. Thank you to our fire admin that finally made the decision to send me on an exploratory mission up in the dispatch center on a 40-hour work week to see what I could help with. There were a lot of awkward stares the first time I walked into dispatch, wondering who is this guy and why is he here? And we've worked through those and have a great thing going up there. And then a lot of the outside box, outside-of-the-box thinking by our admin, saw the police chief come in, so fire admin, PD admin, DCM, Shannon, everybody else that was involved with it to keep it going, as we started to have success with this. To the line, the police and fire folks on the line that run the calls daily, that call me with, how's it working, what needs to be improved, all the feedback from them. Thank you to all of them. And again, while I'm the one receiving the award, if any of these threads were cut or not there, this success maybe doesn't happen. We're a long way from being finished, and this is just part of the whole city machine that operates to keep the city running. There are hundreds of people showing up daily to try and meet the city's mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. I'll close out with the paraphrase of a quote I often use now. Thomas Jefferson said in his inaugural address after the election of 1800, "A difference of opinion is not a difference of purpose." Regardless of our personal opinions, at a base level, we're all seeking the same thing, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To the Mayor and Council, everyone in the chambers here, whether you realize it or not, what you do matters to someone out there. There is someone in the city depending on you to show up and do your job. Every day isn't a win, there's been lonely, frustrating days along this journey. Take the losses, learn from them, regroup, step back in the arena, and keep fighting. That's what I got. Thank you.
Very heartwarming indeed. Best part of my job was just witnessed. I believe, oh, there was one other thing I wanted to touch on briefly, or direct you to it for your information. Courtesy of our city clerk, you have on page one of my report a matrix showing the proposed travel dates that we do to Washington DC every year. This year, on deck, staying with the baseball theme, we have Councilmember House, Vice Mayor Sweet. This trip, by the way, this year is set March 31st. We wish you luck, we know that you will represent us well, as you always do. The years ahead are also shown, dates yet to be determined, but just to get you mentally preparing for these important trips, the mayor, of course, goes to all of these and is typically accompanied by two council members. I think that's it, Council. I want to thank you for your attention and your engagement at the retreats, two-day retreats over the past several weeks. Thank you so much for that. It was, they were very good, very informative. With that, Mayor, Council, unless you have any questions? Apmitted to my report, by the way, is the update from Human Resources and Risk Management. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I would just say thank you to staff for always making the best use of our time.
to keep it going as we started to have success with this. To the line, the police and fire folks on the line that run the calls daily, that call me with, "How's it working? What needs to be improved?" All the feedback from them. Thank you to all of them. And again, while I'm the one receiving the award, if any of these threads were cut or not there, this success maybe doesn't happen. We're a long way from being finished, and this is just part of the whole city machine that operates to keep the city running. There are hundreds of people showing up daily to try and meet the city's mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. I'll close out with the paraphrase of a quote I often use now. Thomas Jefferson said in his inaugural address after the election of 1800, "A difference of opinion is not a difference of purpose." Regardless of our personal opinions, at a base level, we're all seeking the same thing: life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To the mayor and council, everyone in the chambers here, whether you realize it or not, what you do matters to someone out there. There is someone in the city depending on you to show up and do your job. Every day isn't a win. There's been lonely, frustrating days along this journey. Take the losses, learn from them, regroup, step back in the arena, and keep fighting. That's what I got. Thank you.
Best part of my job was just witnessed. I believe, oh, there was one other thing I wanted to touch on briefly or direct you to it for your information. Courtesy of our city clerk, you have on page one of my report a matrix showing the proposed travel dates that we do to Washington DC every year. This year on deck, staying with the baseball theme, we have council member house, vice mayor suite. This trip, by the way, this year is set March 31st. We wish you luck. We know that you will represent us well, as you always do. The years ahead are also shown, dates yet to be determined. But just to get you mentally preparing for these important trips, the mayor, of course, goes to all of these and is typically accompanied by two council members. I think that's it, council. I want to thank you for your attention and your engagement at the retreats, two, two-day retreats over the past several weeks. Thank you so much for that. It was, they were very good, very informative. With that, mayor, council, unless you have any questions. Appended to my report, by the way, is the update from human resources and risk management. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I would just say thank you to staff for always making the best use of our time in those retreats. I really enjoy them, and it's a lot of information, but it is presented in such a organized, professional way that it doesn't even feel like two days, two whole days sitting there. Okay, next up, we have Route 66 celebration plans.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I'm going to go through a bunch of slides with you, and I just have to tell you ahead of time that I have a mighty team sitting behind me because they are doing all this work. So if you guys would stand up, the ones that have joined us today, I would really appreciate That's just, that's just some of them because we have a large group of division that works on this. So I just wanted to share with you that we've been actually working on the Centennial for over a year and a half with an internal city group, which includes the Economic Vitality Division, the PROS Division, and, believe it or not, Capital and Engineering. So we have a lot of people working with us, and I'll talk a little bit more about their help with this. So the question is, so why would we celebrate the 100th anniversary of Route 66? Well, we know that being part of a route that runs through eight states with Flagstaff having 14.2 miles of the stretch is something many travelers want to be part of. Domestic and international visitors come from around the globe to say they drove, walked, biked, and even have run on the Mother Road. The term "Mother Road" for Route 66 originated in a 1939 novel. This road provided refuge for people displaced by the Great Depression and after World War II. As time evolved, interstates would eventually replace the route, such as I-10 and I-40. Sections of the original route exist, and the fact that we still have a large section of that in our city is why we're going to be doing this celebration. I think I go down, yeah. So the above-left shield that you will see is typically what you see when we're talking about Route 66. So we took the liberty, our creative services, Ralph Schmidt, who's sitting right here, he's amazing, to elaborate and create a brand that embodies Flagstaff with our, you'll see, the San Francisco Peaks, our Discover Flagstaff website, and even played around with some wings. I asked Ralph what inspired him to have these wings, and he said, "It made me think of our altitude, our elevation." Also, you see wingtips off of certain cars back in those days, and I just want to let you know Ralph would never give you a brand that wasn't an amazing brand. And so I think that you would agree with me that it does share everything that we are about in that one brand. Lori Pappas, our Marketing Media Relations Manager, along with Trace Ward, our Discover Flagstaff Director, they sit down and they talk about how they're going to strategize and we're going to message to a variety of target audiences. And so the audiences that we are looking at are history buffs, adventure seekers, road trippers, photography enthusiasts, and movie buffs. The demographics are baby boomers, retirees, empty nesters, and people that have young families. We are seeking domestic and international visitors, and international is going to be key. It's about 14% to 16% of our visitation, and we are very proud to say that it is coming back. There's a huge audience that comes from Germany and Canada just because they want to continue to ride on the Mother Road. And so with that said, we are going to show you a variety of ways that we're going to reach all of them. All right, so there's a lot of dates here. March, we started in March of 2024. Talking about the Centennial, we've always been talking about Route 66. We've never stopped talking about Route 66. We have already repainted the visitor center Route 66 mural, but now we have created it with a Centennial logo, and I will tell you, if you haven't had a chance to go over there and take your selfie, I hope that you do, what you're going to find when you go over there are a lot of crazy visitors that are like laying on top of it, taking whatever picture they can so they can send it back home. And I will tell you, I literally have almost like wrecked my car going by there and seen like 20 people literally on top of this mural, so I hope that you go have some fun as well. In April, this isn't listed on this, but we just started working with the Arizona Daily Sun to do two Centennial magazines. And what that is doing is offering businesses that are around, on the route or even off the route, that want to participate in the Centennial magazine to be able to do that. I myself am helping to sell that advertising. I am proud to say that I've sold 12 ads in this publication with the Daily Sun. I used to be the ad director there, so it's something I wanted to participate in. But we're going to not only have that magazine, but we're going to have another one without advertising for those that want to have it as like a coffee table, another keepsake. You're going to see in October, we're going to base our Discover Flagstaff annual event on the theme of Route 66, and we're going to have some special guests, hopefully, that Trace could always talk more about. In November, we're going to actually have a regional Arizona destination marketing organization celebration. We're going to be working with the Flagstaff Fire Department and the Hall of Flame. We are actually going to be putting up signs, that I'll talk about later in this, through our entire route. We are going to have two events, one on June 6, 2026, because it's our peak time to come be in Flagstaff, as well as another small event on the actual date, November 11, 2026. And then we're not going to forget to celebrate America's 250th birthday as well. And then, of course, Veterans Day will be part of the celebration, and then we will conclude around August 2027 with the Centennial, but again, we will never conclude talking about Route 66. So the strategy that we took, and the team took, was to create and establish visitation demand. We do this by positioning Flagstaff with Four Seasons with a historical significance of the route. Our value proposition statement that we created is that Flagstaff is the only 7,000-foot elevation pine-fresh dark-skies city on the Mother Road. This proposition helps encourage a journalist, a blogger, a visitor, and more to want to tell the story about Flagstaff and how we distinguish ourselves from the other cities that are on the 66. The tactics that we will use, as you can see, are listed and then some that aren't. The tactics that Trace, Lori, Ralph, and the team will be using are earned media, which is content we earn but don't pay for, that's always awesome. Own media is content that we control, like our website, and paid media, content that we will actually purchase to actually spread that message even further. We'll have social media, where, again, we're creating two events. We're going to have sales missions, we're going to have conferences, our library is getting involved, we will have video, and much, much more. Some things that we already have in place that I don't know that you know about, but I think you're going to be excited to hear about, is that we have an actual tactic called Walk This Talk Tour. Few people know that the highway officials abandoned part of the Route 66 after traffic from Dust Bowl states clogged downtown Flagstaff. So on this tour, user will uncover the secrets of the original Route 66 alignment when they put their walking shoes on and they dial their phone to the audio tour. They are toured through the Flagstaff South Side Historic District, where they stop to hear the pre-recorded oral histories and what happened along the way. And there's so many other stories within that, too. It's really kind of fun. I hope you go do it. Pedestrian signs are located to show you that you're on the Walk This Talk, and you will hear more when you call toll-free. Toll-free. And if this isn't cool enough, staff, we're able to get Ted Danzen, a well-known actor and a Flagstaff, previous Flagstaff resident, to do the audio on this tour. And so we were really excited. Ted came in to, has a fondness of Northern Arizona, the Museum of Northern Arizona, and he and his sister were here, and Trace and them were able to get him to do the audio tour while they were here, so hats off to the team. Another thing that you probably don't know that we already have in place is the nostalgic road trip. I think this was Trace and Lori's brainchild, but I just want to tell you, it's so cool. This historic travel edition tells you if the stars want you to take an epic hike in the Ponderosa Pines to explore the delights of the historic downtown or ride the Mother Road. This guide helps feature travel information for visitors to Flagstaff and to regional attractions like the Grand Canyon, Sedona, Navajo Nation, and of course, the 66. Is anybody a Gemini here? Anybody? No? Okay, well, if you were a Gemini, this horoscope edition would say, Gemini are old souls, and they will have the urge to hop in a convertible and cruise historic Route 66 before hopping out and taking the downtown walking tour to learn about Flagstaff's rich history. This tour introduces Mother Road Brewery, a common favorite for Geminis, and much more. This is just one example of a horoscope that you will find on this nostalgic tour. I also wanted you to pay special attention to the car. I don't know if you can see it, but we have a bike on the back. So I want you to know, we are continuing to encourage our domestic travelers to park it and to actually find another way to get around our community while they're visiting When it comes to beautification, Jana Weldon and her amazing team have been fast at work and continue to help beautify our stretch of 66. They have placed three monument signs at the beginning, middle, end of the route. I know you haven't missed them, they're amazing. They have also taken fencing, or added fencing, or taken fencing that's from the Foot's Trail, and they've added 13 per-minute shields with a few more that are going to be installed. And actually, for some time, they, we have an actual Route 66 park. You're going to, you see it when you're almost taking the auto park turnoff. It is actually a walking park. It's not somewhere you can actually park right now, but we're going to be doing some touch-ups on this park, and we are also going to try to see if we can get some parking if we wanted to have a small tour or something like that. Ryan Mendoza, our Media Relations Manager, he's actually been bringing what we call familiarization tours, getting them ready for the Centennial, and he's walked them there, but it would be nice if we could actually have a cutout and we could actually place a small tour bus. And then I just wanted to give a shout-out to our previous mayor, council member Evans. She asked us to make Route 66 a plan of action, and we have been doing so ever since she's sat in that seat, so I just wanted to thank her. Some continued beautification on Route 66 is fixing broken fencing. Dave and his team are sick and tired of hearing me talk about this fence. There's two slats, it's an A dot fence, we don't own it, and it's broken, and so we have been working with A dot. We get to file out a permit, we're going to fix that fence, and we are actually going to install something on it, probably the words "Route 66" or what have you. It's across from China Star Restaurant if you're trying to figure out where it's located. But again, we're, we're looking under every rock to make sure that we take care of this. Another thing that we are working with is a possible partnership with the El Pueblo Motel. Its restoration, its history, all of that is super important. Staff, along with a slew of city staff, as well as all of you, are working to keep that co-talker historic connection to the motel. So if, some people might not know, that it is about Native American soldiers of World War II that would gather and stay at this actual motel, and so they would have their meetings and things like that. So we want to make sure that we help the owner there with whatever they decide with beautifying and restoring it. Some ideas that we want to do right now, while it might not be restored, is there is a metal fence that goes across the property so that people don't get into the property, and we are asking that we might be able to banner it for the Centennial. And another one of Ralph's amazing ideas is to banner it, but give it some distinction with the co-talkers, and then maybe a QR code to get to our website to learn more about the Centennial. So we're, we're thinking about all angles. This one I am super stoked about, and I hope that you will be too, is we are going to be installing our brand that we just shared with you, you'll see right here, on 36 intersection poles throughout the entire route for 18 months. The permit has been approved through A dot, and we will be having those installed by NOAS, and then those will be up, so there is never wondering if you're on the 66, you're going to know you are. And then another idea that Ralph had, Ralph's amazing, if you haven't figured it out. Another idea that Ralph's had is that after we are asked to take those down, we are thinking of maybe considering auctioning them off so that someone that has, wants that nostalgic memento, they can have it. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't want to freak out Sterling, but maybe we auction them off and any funds could go to a worthy cause or something like that. Again, we could e-session over that, and then, not today. And then, last but not least, we have oversized window clings that are going to be offered to all businesses that are on the route to put them up. If you want to see how that looks, go by Rainbow Zen, go by Arizona Music Pro, they're already up, and we are going to have a mass group of volunteers around May to continue to put those up and install them. We love Mountain Line Bus. We continue to do wraps with them. You probably saw some of those when we did our outreach for the BBB renewal. We do it to remind everyone about our 225-plus restaurants and bars and why we want them to dine out, and we also do it to encourage them to fly Flagstaff first. So what we're going to also do is to continue to tell them about the 66, the Centennial, probably do a really quick QR code to let them get more information, that type of thing. So that will be also somewhere that you see us. Again, I already shared about the keepsake publications and flip books that gives you a little bit idea of the sales flyer that we've been working with. And again, Lori just talked with our Daily Sun rep, and we were envisioning a fun-sized book. We think it's already at 80 pages, so I think it's going to be super impressive. Sales, Jessica Young, she's our Meeting Events and Conference Manager. She is working always to get meetings, events, and conferences here in Flagstaff. It's super important to a hotel or a conference center to be able to fill that space and to have those conferences here instead of us going elsewhere, and so she's working on that. She's targeting car and motorcycle clubs to come here, park it, let people see their beautiful cars and motorcycles and things like that. So she is diligently working on that. She's going to numerous conferences, sales missions, things like that. So I just want to let you know on the sales end, we are selling Flagstaff. International Travel Trade, we have Meg Roder, our Travel Trade Manager. She is always talking Route 66 internationally, and she is going to be, she's been placing ads, newsletters, we have blogs. She actually is going to IPW with Trace's team. It is the largest travel trade show that we have each year. Over 6,000 tour operators comes to this show, and this year, Arizona Offs Tourism said the theme is Route 66 Centennial. We were already on top of it last year where we had our own neon in our booth, and I can tell you, it got mad response. So we're really excited that we are going to continue to be able to talk about the Mother Road. And then Visitor Services, you will see that they already have merchandise for Route 66 in the actual visitor center. So if you have anybody that's interested, they can go there today and pick something up with more to come. Again, as you see in this picture, the mural was redone, and we're very excited for you to go over and see it. And then, last but not least, they're offering tours, brochures. We have a Route 66 passport that's already on the discoverflagstaff.com website, which gives you the 66 things to do. I hope that you'll do some of those. And they will be ambassadors at the visitor center to help visitors that say, "What else can I do in this really awesome town?" Well, you can come here and we'll show you, and they'll hand out the passport and then some. And then the last thing I wanted to share was our relationship with the Arizona Offs Tourism. I've been sitting on a task force for the Centennial, and the team also sits on different task force. We're all spreading out and dividing and conquering, and AOT has been taking this time to gather what they should do for the state. And so we've been giving ideas of what we're doing, they're giving ideas back, and I think that we're, we're getting somewhere. They have created three rural co-ops for us to participate in, and one of the ideas is that they're going to actually map it, and then we'll have links to our own Flagstaff website, things like that. They're also working with the Smithsonian Magazine. That's pretty cool. I mean, so we're going to be hopefully in the Smithsonian in some way. And then, one thing I really hope pans out, they're working with Mattel Toys, Hot Wheels, because as you know, it's very popular for the movie Cars, and if they can get something going here, and they'll know in March if they're selected, if we're selected, there will be a car that is actually moved from city to city that we can have activations with, and we can also invite families and different people of that genre that want to come up and to come up and participate. So that will be fun, and I'm hoping that maybe we'll get a Flagstaff car out of it or something, that would be fun. And then Debbie Johnson, the previous AOT director that I worked with a lot, she is on what we call the statewide group for Route 66, so she's working with Brand USA, and she will work on trying to get us exposure globally, so she's in all of our meetings as well. And then last but not least, Nikki, who leads the Historic Route 66 Group, is focusing on creating a 1920s theme right around the Centennial event, where we can talk about the 66, have people come out dressed in different clothing and era, that type of thing. And then right now, if you go to their website, they're even giving out sticker packets and things like that. So there is an enormous amount of buzz going on with this. And then, my last slide, I just wanted to say, as you know, it's a lot going on, we still have a lot more that we're creating and doing. It's super important for us to take this time to make sure that the 66 is remembered always, but that the Centennial makes it even a bigger deal. I do want to thank Paul Mood and Trevor Henry from Capital and Engineering, they are keeping us abreast of all things that are being done that might impede a visitor on the 66 or construction, so I can tell you, Paul and Trevor have gone so far as to give me an entire map, so I want to say, taking it a next level, I really appreciate it. I want to thank Rebecca and Amy and Haley from PROS, because they're helping us with all things events. And then, again, this team that sits behind me, they're the brainchild of Route 66 and the Centennial, so again, takes a village, and I can tell you, you've got the right people that are doing it, and I think you're gonna be pretty excited to see how things unfold. Any questions from you or the team?
Several. First up, Councilmember House.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you to the team, and thank you Ralph for the amazing logo for this, thank you to the whole team for all of us going into this, this is really, really exciting. I'm, I'm super excited for the ongoing Centennial celebration, and I want to thank you, Heidi, for noting some of that history of migration along the Mother Road. You know, New York has the Statue of Liberty, we have the warm embrace of our Mother Road, so that's super important. I am extremely grateful to the team for elevating the celebration and our community, and I'm hoping that there are opportunities, I actually just downloaded the 66 Things to Do, and so I see some of the, the things that are in there, but I'm hoping that you can expound on some of the ways that we'll be able to engage our historic communities and the cultural communities that have traveled the Mother Road, and would love to hear more about that, and just, again, really excited about all of this and the creativity going into all of these activities.
Mayor, Councilmember House, I'm gonna invite Lori or Trace up here to expound on that, because you're the ones that are, that put the passport together. Good afternoon, Council, Lori Pappas, Marketing and Media Relations VP with Discover Flagstaff.
And Mayor, Council, Trace Ward, Discover Flagstaff Director. Thanks for having us today.
So responding to the question in regards to cultural, there, we are working very closely with businesses throughout town, so now that we have the passport stood up, there's definitely gonna be opportunity to ebb and flow as programming becomes available. And we've met with community in regard to the passport, so they should be pretty dialed in as far as what we're looking for and how they can participate. Directly, Museum of Northern Arizona, they have a big role, also leveraging our festivals and existing content and programming that's available, that too is, is plugged in organically and even evergreen. So we've got, we've got that in our, our wheelhouse as well, but we're certainly open for more and to certainly embrace that. In addition, we talked about earned media, there's so much opportunity for earned media, and Heidi told the good story that the earned media is at no cost. So a couple of things that we've got cooking earned media-wise, we have an Australian show coming to Flagstaff to create some video, and this is in tandem with the Arizona Office of Tourism, and we're working with a couple of different destinations along the Northern Arizona route, such as Seligman and Williams. Sedona's even a part of that, I know they don't have Route 66, but they're just part of the production, so sharing that. And culture, even things outside of Route 66, such as our dark skies, there's gonna be some story to tell about that. We're folding in our motor courts, we're folding in beautification with murals and, and the walking tour associated with that, and that's just a little glimpse of the content that we're producing for that. In addition, and just talking about the versatility of, of the wider story that we're telling in addition to Route 66, is high-altitude training is a big deal, and it's gonna continue to be a big deal for us, especially as LA has their eye on the Olympics in 2028. And with that, we are hosting a elite runner from France, and I kid you not, this gentleman is running the entire route of 66. Thank you. I'm like, no, no, but he's doing it. And so my point is, is that this is just such a versatile campaign, that we certainly are embracing just the various tangents from campaigns to cultures to even our community values. This is all going to be part of this programming.
Thank you for that, and just to clarify, and I, maybe Trace will get into this a little bit as well, but I did note that there's the, what I'm talking about is also our multicultural communities. So thinking about the Green Book, which I see as part of the, the 66 Things to Do, thinking about the Basque community, the, just the history of all of these different groups that have traveled Route 66 and found home in our community because of the welcoming nature of, of Flagstaff. I think that's a really important thing for us to be able to highlight and elevate, that, that so many of these different communities have made history along Route 66 and made history here in Flagstaff, just because they were welcomed here and able to establish homes and, and create a sense of identity here that they could not other places.
Well, thank you for that, Councilmember House. I would say that it's a work in progress, right? And so it's wonderful to hear that, because now we have some encouragement to even look into that more and see how, how we can accentuate or bolster those messages. So how about film at 11, we'll get back to you. Okay? Thanks.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much, thanks to the whole team. I do have a couple of questions, so stick with me here, I'll ask them one at a time, and then I have a couple of gratuitous comments to throw your way, suggestions at the end. First of all, I really, really appreciate and believe in what you're doing, I think this is super important, I think we should be all in, I think we should throw in for this 100%, 110%. So know that that support is out there for whatever you guys need to do. I think this is a unique moment, and it's something that we could really leverage. My first question is, I know we have at least one member of the public here with us today, and he's been with us before, he spoke at Public Comment a couple times with concern and enthusiasm about the 100 Year Celebration. I don't remember if he's with the Historic Route 66 Group or, or what, but just broadly, Heidi, I'm wondering if you can speak to how you're collaborating with our interested public at large, and also with the larger 66 campaign, notwithstanding the AOT connection that you already mentioned, and then obviously, there's some of the things that Lori and Trace just brought up too, but, you know, maybe you can speak to that. One flashpoint for you, I'm sorry if I missed this, it could have been mentioned, and I just completely didn't hear it. Is there a, a thing where there's a group that is officially traveling from one end to the other and has scheduled, calendared stop in Flagstaff, so that's something we can keep an eye on? I, I would imagine there'd be some sort of caravan that's doing this, you know, everyone's doing it on their own, organically, but also an official, like, like campaign that's just really hitting this hard. So I'll let you speak to all those things before I move on.
Okay, I hope I can remember all those. Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, just so you know, we, we're happy to collaborate with anybody, but what we aren't going to do is to collaborate with people that want us to pay for their services, because we already have a whole team here that is paid through the City of Flagstaff and the Bid Board and Beverage Taxes, you see, that are hired to do just so, so that's, as you can see, we're, we're doing that. If you want to collaborate, if they want to collaborate with us, then we can, you know, bounce around ideas and share our brand and things like that with them, but again, certain people have reached out to us that wanted us to pay for their services, and we already have the services in-house, so that's one thing. We are collaborating at a great length with all of the, all of the cities that are in Arizona through Arizona Office of Tourism. We're also now collaborating with Brand USA, which is all eight states, so we have definitely been collaborating with a very large group. Anybody that else that wants to, to participate with us offline, we can do that, but again, we won't be paying for their services. That is, again, already taken care of. When it comes to people that might be doing the entire route, Ryan Randazzo and Lori will be working with all of those, and they are reaching out. The one that Lori just told you about, the runner, has already reached out. They will be coming into Flagstaff literally at midnight, and Ryan and Lori are dedicated to make sure that that person is greeted and there is media around it and things like that. I don't want to steal Lori's thunder, if there's something else you want to add, Lori, on, on knowing who might be going through the, the whole route, but I will say that Ryan Randazzo would be the contact. So anything we left out? Okay, and did I miss, what else did I miss?
At that, at this point, no, I, I think you're good, and I think you guys were pretty extensive with mentioning all those collaborations. I wasn't aware of the, the pay to participate aspect of that one group. Very good to mention it out loud, just get that clarity out there. You mentioned the 66 Walking Park. I, I'm curious, what kind of interpretation is, is already there, and are you guys planning on adding more? What, what more can we put out there in terms of engaging the public when they're out there?
So the Walk This Talk, I'm gonna let Lori speak to that, or Trace?
Yeah, I'm asking specifically about the park that you guys are gonna be investing a little bit in.
Jana or Dave, do you guys want to chat about this?
Hello, Mayor and Council, Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. So out towards the mall, but not all the way, sort of just east of the Fanning Route 66 interchange, is an actual portion of preserved Route 66 pavement, the original pavement, and there was a small sort of pocket park built there, it was interpretive signage, picnic tables, sheltered space, and just a place to honor that original pavement and provide the space to be there. There is not vehicle access to that particular park, the idea was that folks would park in places and, and use the urban trail to get there. And over time, that particular park space has gotten worn on a little bit, and so one of the projects that we're looking at doing is refreshing it, so meaning, take the interpretive plaques and kind of bring them up a little bit, as well as potentially repainting or resurfacing some of the amenities that are there so that they, they look great. It's something we want to do in general with beautification projects, obviously, maintenance is a part of it, and making sure that there's something we're proud of as time wears on them is important. We're hoping to get that done in time for the Centennial. We are also reaching out to BNSF and working, hopefully, working with them unless we don't actually have to, we're still working on the right-of-way there, because there's an access road that BNSF uses to get down there. We don't, as mentioned, we don't currently have vehicle access to that particular place. That has made it a little challenging, because while the intention, I think, was good, that people would park and sort of walk in, occasionally we have tourist groups or, or local residents who drive down that no-access road and end up parked on the urban trail, which is a hazard for e-bikers and, and other pedestrians that are coming through. So we're looking to see if there's a way that we could put a couple parking spaces in that might make it easier for tourists or visitors to access, local people to access. Also, sometimes there's behavioral issues down in there because it's difficult for PD to get to, and so this would give PD better access as well. So it, it's kind of a polishing what is really a neat community amenity, and then maybe working to enhance access a little bit as well. We're not sure we'll get the parking in before the Centennial, but that's more of a long-term piece, but we can at least make it a little nicer, a little more polished.
Okay, thank you, fantastic, David, I appreciate going a little more in-depth there about that. I, I am skeptical that that space is fulfilling its potential in terms of visitation and being an attraction. It is a little awkward that there's, there's no access to it unless you already happen to be walking along that urban path, and I don't know how many people really do that, especially tourists. So I would highly encourage you guys to work on that, that public access and, and a few parking spots, and if, we're already collaborating with BNSF on a, a number of other things, if that's not on the list, I, I don't remember hearing about it specifically, maybe we can just throw that in the mix and, and make it part of the, the longer ongoing downtown mile conversation and, and with the Rio project. Appreciate it, David, thank you. So one other question, a couple other questions, I, I really love the logo. Ralph, this is you, right? Is it? It's, it's actually quite elegant, and it has a lovely balance to it, and I really don't like to micromanage others' artwork, especially artwork, but I, I was wondering if there was a discussion on that logo regarding the size of the 100 Anniversary Banner? I just think it looks, if, if, that part specifically feels a little bit underrepresented here, and if that's, if that ship has already sailed, if it's not even worth bringing it up, then, then we don't have to talk about it at all, but just a shout-out to Ralph in general. Okay?
But I will tell you, it has long sailed, but I will tell you, we did have collaboration, we did share it to Tourism Commission and, and all of that, and they did recommend us moving it forward, but it doesn't mean that we can't do something content-wise to continue to make sure that they understand the significance.
And I, I understand that finding that, that balance for the overall logo shape is just really a big part of that whole dynamic. So also, you, you mentioned 7,000 Feet Pine Fresh Dark Sky City on the Mother Road. Is, is Flagstaff also the only STEM or STEAM city on the Mother Road? I'm wondering if it is, if that's worth throwing in there as well.
Could you repeat that?
Flagstaff is a, is the, is the first STEAM city, right?
Yeah.
STEM STEAM city.
Correct.
Wondering if, if that, if, just an idea for you to maybe toss that in there if, if some, some of those conversations are still being navigated.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
I, you said fun-sized book, it gave me an idea, and I'll, I'll throw it out there for you for free, a Route 66 Flagstaff coloring book.
Yeah.
Sounds like a really cool idea to me, especially as you're trying to attract younger families. I, I would color that book. And then, Heidi, finally, I was hoping you could speculate a little bit on the infatuation with Route 66 in Germany and in Europe more generally, it's, that's very interesting to me, and I know, I know there's a long history that you guys have engaged business owners coming through here, and they do very well, and I, I just, I just want to understand that connection a little more logically.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Aslan, Trace Ward, CBB Director, I, you know, they're not the only country. What's interesting, Benelux is also very interested, they, they tend to want to explore, they're a, a traveling public that goes in and wants, does their homework even before they get to the country. They, they love the van life, you're gonna see, and motorcycle, we used to have Eagle Rider, we were the only Eagle Rider on Route 66. That particular Uli and, and his wife actually had family issues and obligations is why they ended up moving back to Germany. It wasn't that they weren't doing well in their location on Route 66, but that, their number-one customer was Germany, only second to, only second would be Benelux area, so it's just a, it's sort of the zeitgeist of that traveling public. I would tell you that it's also just a European thing, so you're gonna find it in, in France as well, but Germany's the number-one when it comes to getting, you know, van life, getting in a car, driving across the country, Route 66 nostalgia in particular, so, you know, I, I can't tell you 100% culturally why that is, it's just very ubiquitous. ubiquitously known that that is the case. I hope I answered your question.
Well, that's so curious. I'm happy to just explore it with you a little bit. And I like how you use the word zeitgeist. That's a German word.
I was challenged to use that.
Last thing I want to mention too is anytime we're dealing with cars, it's always an opportunity to showcase and highlight electrification. So, you know, and even retrofitting is kind of a fun thing. Whenever you get an opportunity to sort of beat that drum, I say go for it.
Thank you. We will.
Still here.
I will.
Councilmember Sweet, Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information. I'm definitely excited about this. Heidi, can you touch a little bit on what you're doing to reach out to the business owners, making sure that they're aware of what's happening and, and what an asset this could be to, to them?
Sure. Well, there was a lot of outreach already because that's how we put the passport together. And that was done by Lori Pappas and Sabrina Beard, our marketing specialists at Discover Flagstaff. So anyone that is on that passport has committed to, to be a showcase for the Centennial. We also will be reaching out to more businesses to actually, hopefully have them take their free window cling, oversized window cling, and want to put it on their place of business. We actually would love to adhere it for them, just to make sure that it actually gets placed and it's properly exposed to the 66. We also have, Trace has a monthly coffee klatch that you can come onto virtual. And we've spoken about it several times there and how people can participate and be involved. And then, of course, right now, it's mad outreach to the businesses to be part of the keepsake publication. So if there's anybody that you know, please have them reach out to me because I am actively selling that with the Daily Sun and we would like for them to participate. Lori and Ryan have already been working with other writers to do the writing pieces in that publication, as well as we'll be writing some of that too. So I think you're going to see that we're really trying to include the whole business group and that's along the route. And so I think we've really have been dotting our i's and crossing our t's, quite honestly.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I do have my window clings up and I think the smaller ones have the QR code on them and I love that. I have seen my customers using that on my windows. So thank you, Ralph, for bringing those by. And having someone install the window clings, I think, would be helpful.
Okay, yeah. Well, we have a group, we actually have a fraternity at NAU that reach out to me and they want to help us in May as a, as a volunteer project. So we will be enlisting them and whoever else wants to participate to really do a good job.
Thank you. And just a couple more things. I know you're talking to the DBA in the Chamber. Please keep that up, making sure that they're helping get the word out. And I have a cute story. So my store is on Route 66 and the options on this are so endless. I had a gaggle of women in. They were celebrating something. I couldn't figure out what. One of them was turning 66 and they went along and did different businesses on 66 and towns and did her birthday celebration that way. And I thought it was a great idea. So, I don't know, hit me up if you want some
I like that.
inspiration ideas.
A 66 birthday idea. All right, we'll
Never know, it can happen.
We'll toss that around. I will say, I did get to do a radio show that Joanne hooked me up with Joe Galley last week and I went on radio and we talked about the Centennial and how businesses could get involved. So that, that's out there. Joe also asked for window clings for the Chamber's actual location, which he is receiving. And then Hunter and I at DBA with, along with our team, we actually have a monthly meeting. So he's well-versed in what we're doing with 66. And part of our June 6 event will involve the downtown, as well as the mall.
It's all great to hear, Heidi. And I just really appreciate the work your team has been doing. You've set this up well for success and I think it's a huge impact on our community. So thank you.
It definitely can be.
It will be.
That's right.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more question. I have been scrolling through the 66 passport. And can you tell us more about the reward or prize element of that as well?
All right. Putting Lori on the spot. Sabrina did put this together, so we might do our best here.
I think it's going to be the dice, right?
Yeah. We have purchased multiple Route 66 themed tchotchkes, if you will. So hearken back to the days of the dice hanging from the rearview mirror. So we've got oversized fuzzy dice that's a part of the prize package. And there are several other tchotchkes. I believe you may have some of recycled tire coasters. I think those are part of the prize package, the stickers. Yeah. And there's a couple of other things in there. And I'm honestly, the, I am not quite sure of what the highest point metric is yet. I believe our count for signups for the passport exceeds 300. So we have not yet dispersed prizes to my knowledge, but we'll get there. It's very similar to the passport that we have in place for our trails and Pledge for the Wild, very similar in regards to the pricing structure. But I need to sharpen my pencil on those, on those prizes. Councilmember.
I can tell you. Got it pulled up right here. So the highest prize, it looks like, is the Route 66 journal, which looks awesome and has the tire print.
The tire prints, yeah.
Yeah, going across the front of that. That's 50 points. Then the 66 dice, 40 points. The 66 keychain is 30 points. The pen is 20. The coaster is 10.
Okay.
And the air freshener is five. And they all just, they look so fun. So I think that's a really good thing to, to highlight for folks that are downloading it. Because, yeah, until I actually saw that tab there, I didn't realize that there were any purpose for the points. So that's really cool.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you. And that's actually maybe something actionable that we can do to move that forward. Also, just leveraging some of our, our different verticals, even earned media, bringing that front and forward. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. A really enjoyable and informative presentation. I am so proud of Flagstaff for preserving that 100 or 200 feet of the original concrete out on the east side. And I'm wondering, I keep in mind that, you know, Flagstaff isn't competing with Seligman or Ashfork or St. Louis, but is there anything, is anyone aware if any other cities or towns have preserved that original concrete of the Tulane Route 66 original paving?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I believe so. Seligman has, and there probably are others, but I don't want to misspeak. So, but we can look into it and get, get back with you if you'd like.
Thank you. I realize that if, if, if we really were unique, it'd be something you could, you could promote. But if there are two or three others, we shouldn't tread on their toes. So, but thank you for that.
Yep. And, and we are unique. We're the only Flagstaff.
Yeah.
Yep. And we're in the song.
Yeah, we are. But Mayor, Councilmember Spence, that's why we're continuing to have those monthly meetings with all of the cities, is to make sure that we know what they're doing, what we're doing, so that we make it a, we don't want anyone to forget about Arizona. So we are definitely, we'll find out more of that. And AOT is going to be highlighting all of it.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add my thanks. This is phenomenal. And if you mention this, I apologize. But is there going to be something special at City Hall?
It was more or less going to be over at the Visitor Center. But if there's something that you want us to do to, you know, make City Hall more of a standout, we can definitely do that. We are planning, hoping to put some of the clings on City Hall. We, there's tons of ideas. So again, we're still generating them. And if there's something that you'd like us to do, one of the ideas that we could do is actually when you're deciding on your flags, we could have a Route 66 flag created and you could have that up for a certain time in November. I don't want to take away from Veterans Day or anything, but those are some thoughts or something that we could put in the grassy area that wouldn't upset anybody. We could make some signage for that, just let people realize that it's the Centennial and they're still on 66 and that we are proudly recognizing it. So if you'd like to talk offline with me, again, we are open to those ideas and we definitely have a budget to continue to make this all that you want to see in your city. I am going to take these ideas and I will get back to you because I love a lot of those. And the team and I will continue to talk about that at our next internal meeting.
Thank you. I just want to applaud your entire staff. It's obvious that you've put a lot of time, thought, effort, and talent into this. And you're, you're going to make Flagstaff shine throughout the anniversary.
Thank you. I, I don't know if I remember when we were doing the Lunar Legacy, but when we get, put our minds to it, we go hard. And I just want you to know this team back here, honestly, can't even tell you how honored I am to work with all of them. So thank you. And I will tell you, it's exciting to see other divisions that take this as serious as we do.
Thank you.
All right. We have the USDA Urban Agriculture and Innovative Production Grant Update. Welcome Sustainability.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, community members in person and online. My name is Stephen Thompson and I serve as a manager within the Sustainability Division. And I'm here with some critical partners to provide an update to the assessing and growing a sustainable community food system, which is a project that is funded through a grant funded by the United States Department of Agriculture, or USDA. So just a quick overview of what you'll be seeing and hearing tonight, not tonight, this afternoon. I'll be providing a brief project overview and purpose timeline of the project itself. The partners that I have here with me today will provide information about their significant contributions and highlighting the community engagement process and the information that we were able to collect through that community engagement to help inform the next phase of the project. So what is this project all about? Assessing and Growing a Sustainable Community Food System. This is all about identifying the needs in the community, assessing what is already here, pulling out information to help inform a food action plan. So that's the project and program in a nutshell. A little more detail on that. We can look at this timeline of where we are. This is a multi-year, multi-phase project. Phase one was collecting and synthesizing information about food access, distribution across Flagstaff and Northern Arizona. That wrapped up in July of 2024, when we published the Community Food System Assessment. That assessment can be found on our website. It's also in the packet tonight. And Phase two was taking those findings from the Food System Assessment, bringing it to numerous community members and groups to get feedback and pull out themes to help inform goals for a food action plan, which is all of Phase three. Tonight, not tonight, this afternoon, we are focusing on Phase two, those community conversations and community engagement. And I'm going to turn it over in just a moment to some of our critical partners in Phase two and throughout this project. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the numerous community members and organizations who have contributed to this project so far, provided valuable feedback and insight, not only when we're collecting information for the assessment, but then in the community engagement side of things. And a huge shout out to our grants and contracts team, who have been pivotal in moving this project forward. So to share some great information about their contributions to this project and ongoing initiatives, I'm going to first turn it over to Sarah Sprague from Food Link and then Adrian Udharbe from Pinnacle Prevention. So I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Sprague and I am the Food Systems Coordinator for Flagstaff Food Link. Flagstaff Food Link is a local nonprofit here in town and we engage in the pillars and facets of food access and our local food system. So you may see us engaging and hosting community engagement events, workshops, which are educational opportunities for our community. We are organizing the Coconino Grower Coalition. And importantly, we have been involved in meaningful community-based projects and research such as this and partook in the second phase being these community conversations. So given the culmination of who Flagstaff Food Link is, I believe that we provide a unique experience and will continue to provide this unique perspective, my bad, during the process of the design and the implementation of this project. Part of my role was to coordinate the grant steering committee. And this was an opportunity to update the steering committee on information, asking them for suggestions and insights and feedback as we move forward with this process. And we worked with our regional, local, and community partners to host and promote these events and also really provided a lot of outreach efforts as needed and appropriate. I continuously facilitate and organize the Coconino Grower Coalition meetings. This is a pretty amazing group of growers, farmers, and ranchers in our area where we meet once a month to go over this project. I inform them on information, any updates, ask them for suggestions as needed, and importantly to me, share ideas with them about ways to meaningfully get involved in this project and as we move forward with the food action plan. And I'm here speaking to you all in support of public meetings. I have participated in community meetings and stakeholder gatherings related to this grant. So when we're talking about the community conversations, you can see these six different locations on the slide. And what I really enjoyed about these locations and the intentionality that we had is that we did capture diversity of lived experiences, backgrounds, and perspectives. So, yeah, as I mentioned, there's the locations and all of the different targeted audiences. And you may note that two of the locations towards the end are highlighted. This is kind of where, given our understanding of our community and working with local nonprofits and just different community members, that we kind of pivoted a little bit. And I really did advocate for us to focus on centering indigenous perspectives as, in regards to when we analyzed this first iteration of, yeah, just the first phase of this project. So we decided that we would go out to Loop and specifically to the Star School. And we had a really amazing fruitful conversation with families and community members, just trying to go a little bit outside of the city limits and try to mitigate any of, you know, concerns pertaining to transportation. And again, really trying to center indigenous perspectives pertaining to that first phase and moving forward. And along these lines, we pivoted and went to Willabon Environmental Education Center. And this was intentional as we really wanted to capture any nuances amongst educators and FUSD partners. So this could be educators working in environmental education, outdoor education, and garden education, along with educators in our community. We really wanted to center these perspectives as we value the perspectives and, and all, and see the direct relationship that a lot of educators have working with youth and young adults in our community. So when we pivoted, I believe that we provided some perspectives and nuances that otherwise not, would not have been captured. And all in all, I am happy to say that I believe that we did have a pretty representative sample size of a population and uplifted a lot of diverse perspectives with intentionality as well. And lastly, we hosted two stakeholder gatherings. And the role that Flagstaff Food Link provided was to do a lot of the outreach efforts when, in regards to the audience. So we have connections with different professionals in the local and regional food system, various nonprofits, a lot of our community partners, and many advocates who, who did outreach. And they came to this event. And we also supported the logistics of the day of this event. came to this event. And we also supported the logistics of the day of this event. So that is, in a nutshell, kind of how Flagstaff Food Link supported the second iteration of this very, very important project. And I want to thank you for your time, energy, and support.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett and Council members. My name is Adrian Udarbe. I'm the Executive Director of Pinnacle Prevention. We are a statewide nonprofit based here in Arizona with a focus on cultivating a just food system. And we're really fortunate to be able to work with many different cities and towns. But I think what's really special about the city of Flagstaff and the deep intentionality that they put into this project was the collaboration with Flagstaff Food Link as your local coalition that really made the community engagement aspect of this project really special. So I'm going to give a broad, like a very brief overview of how we went about doing the community engagement and what we learned. But you do have a link to the report and I do encourage you to read through that report in all of your free time. But there's some really deep quotes and some really beautiful lived experiences that were captured and shared in there as well. So the two groups that we centered in our community engagement efforts were community members and community stakeholders. This was done last summer and then wrapped up in October. And the whole purpose of the community engagement was to understand how community members were just making meaning of the data. Many times we do a lot of assessments and if you're a data nerd like me, you can really dig into the data and you appreciate it. But if you're a community member, it can be hard to make sense or make meaning of the data. So we really wanted to understand how community was making meaning of that data. We were also seeking to understand community members' needs, experiences, and gaps and barriers that could be used to develop priorities for this third and final phase that the city is entering into here for the development of the food action plan, as well as identify future food business opportunities as well. So we engaged a total of 141 individuals. That was 94 community members and 47 stakeholders. Eighty-five percent of the folks that we engaged reside in Flagstaff. We had the greatest participation from the 86004 ZIP code. We had a broad range of participation across age groups. So reached everybody from ages 18 to over 75 years of age. And there was pretty equal split across all of those age groups, which is pretty unheard of. And we've done this in other cities and towns. We tend to see it more broadly represented with typically 50 and older. So it was really nice to see that range of participation and passion. And participation by race and ethnicity was also pretty well aligned with your census numbers. We did have slightly higher participation among Native Americans and your Indigenous communities here. So the, the assessment, if you, if you remember, is kind of cut up into six major sections. And when we talk about a food system, we're talking about everything from how food is grown, distributed, packaged, consumed, purchased, and then waste. So that whole system. And so they break the assessment down into six sections and we sought to understand how community members were making sense and making meaning of the data in each of these sections. So the first one was agricultural landscape, food production, and infrastructure. There's several data points that were offered there. And the data points that were of the greatest interest to community members was really shock and surprise over the number of farms and ranches that is in the area here in Northern Arizona. There was also a lot of surprise by the percent of Indigenous farmers that are here too, and a curiosity to understand more about who are they, what are they growing, and, and do we have access to the foods that they're growing. There was a lot of concern about the loss of farmland in the area and a lot of discussion among community members as to what potentially is the cause of that loss of farmland. Is it anything from waste to, to water, to development, and really trying to understand that. And then there was big concern about the distribution gaps in the area as well too, in terms of how food moves through the area and how to protect the local food shed in the event of something like a pandemic or highway and freeway closures and different things like that. I'm going to move us into the food retail environment and food access. The highest points of interest here were what was perceived to be a high number of restaurants in the area, especially in comparison to what is perceived to be a low number of grocery mark, grocery stores and supermarkets, especially those that are accepting nutrition assistance programs. So by nutrition assistance, I'm specifically speaking to SNAP, formerly food stamps, WIC, Women, Infants, and Children's Program benefits, Double Up Food Bucks, the SNAP matching fruit and veggie program as well. As well as a lot of concern and a lot of conversation around food cost, there was dialogue about perceptions of local foods costing more, understanding why they might cost more as well too, and just food costs in general amid inflation and the high cost of living as well. For food consumption and health, the highest points of interest from community members were, again, food costs as it connected back to options or lack of options and how that relates to health. So not necessarily that folks don't know what they need to eat to be able to eat well and to eat healthy, but they can always afford those foods that are the most healthy for them. There was also a big desire to focus on children and opportunities through school, especially as it relates to food and health, and to start and integrate those, that understanding and that connection to agriculture and food very young, so that it can grow with kids over time. With regards to food waste and recovery, Arizona is number one in the country, unfortunately, when it comes to food waste. So there was a lot of conversation around that and what's causing that. And then as it connects back to composting as well, with a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation as to why, who, and why would we compost and what's needed to make that feel possible. So in terms of how community was making meaning of the data, there was some points of confusion. You know, communities oftentimes trying to understand from these data points if something is good or bad. So if something's presented as a percentage, is it something that should feel alarming to them or not? They wanted to dig deeper and to understand more. And then it was hard to understand from the data too, what actions should be taken in response to that. So I do think that there's going to be great opportunity in developing the food action plan that could help to tackle and unpack some of that. With respects to barriers and challenges, the biggest barriers and challenges named by community members were, again, food costs, a need to better support the area farmers and food producers when it comes to growing their, their farm businesses, making sure that they have enough labor support, making sure they have access to infrastructure and distribution. And then there was lots of organic dialogue that surfaced between tensions around investing in the food system and where it was felt to be in conflict with challenges with tourism, and whether or not the Flagstaff Food System is one that is built for folks outside of Flagstaff that come to visit or where the folks that live here in Flagstaff can actually feel like they're accessing and part of it as well too. So something to dig deeper in in the future. What we found to be the themes in terms of opportunities that were informed by the community was, number one, to increase food hubs across Northern Arizona was a big point of interest for folks, improving partnerships that are focused on food distribution challenges, incentivizing healthy food options that could help to address food costs and affordability, and then making it more possible and more accessible for Northern Arizona to grow their own food. There's tremendous passion and interest in that from anybody who lives in an apartment wanting to grow maybe in containers on their patios to somebody who actually has land and wanting to try to figure out how to grow in this diverse climate up here. This moves us into stakeholder reflections. I'm going to highlight some of the points of interest from stakeholders, but you'll see themes that were similar to that of community members. And then I'll also call out some of the things that stood out as unique to them. So similarly to the community members, stakeholders were very much interested in and surprised by the number of farms and ranches and the percent of Indigenous growers and farmers in the area. But they also specifically were very interested in understanding direct-to-consumer sales opportunities and wondering what opportunities there might be to increase those. And when we, when we say direct-to-consumer in the food space, oftentimes this could be farm stands, onsite, at a farm, to anything at the farmer's markets like which you host here. There was a lot of interest in understanding zoning regulations. One of the assessment findings was that food business owners feel like zoning regulations are a challenge. And so the stakeholders really wanted to understand what those are and what those could be. And there was a lot of passion and interest in terms of growing and increasing access to commercial kitchen infrastructure and access, and not necessarily having to build new commercial kitchens, but utilizing what already might exist at faith-based organizations, at schools, and making it more of a cooperative opportunity. In the food retail environment and food access, there was a lot of interest among stakeholder, stakeholders, again, around the number of eateries, a lot of interest in understanding the number of grocery outlets and feeling, again, like that was low for the area, and then contrasting that with the cost of food and trying to understand ways to bring those food costs down. In food consumption, health, and food access, there was a lot of conversation among stakeholders around the percent of income that is spent on food and how that relates to cost of living that oftentimes got intertwined in conversations about the cost of housing as well in the area and how you oftentimes might have to give or take between food and just paying for your rent. Lots of conversation also around school-based opportunities for children, youth, and students. There was some beautiful conversation that surfaced among stakeholders in terms of trying to create more opportunities, knowing that farmers need more labor and support and getting high school students to be that and to actually, and you know, start that passion in farming with them. There was a lot of conversation around the percent of people that are interested in going, growing food. And then that was contrasted with the percent of people that were interested in increasing access to farmer's markets, which was felt to be low in relation from their perspective to the number of people that are interested in growing food. So a lot of conversation between how that intertwines with those that just want to grow food for themselves and those that actually want to grow enough food to be able to sell it to community. And then also in food waste and recovery, a lot of shock and despair around the amount of waste and that Arizona is number one around waste. And then stakeholders specifically had a lot of comments, confusion around liabilities around food recovery and what an opportunity because of food costs to make sure that folks that are food insecure can access food that's otherwise going to waste, but feeling confused about legal liabilities around that. In terms of the priorities among stakeholders for the food action plan, the number one priority was addressing food access. The second one was addressing issues around the areas of agriculture landscape and food production. And then there was a tie in food retail environment and food system infrastructure in terms of what they felt the food action plan should really prioritize and focus on of the different six areas that were highlighted in the assessment. Some of the potential future food business opportunities that were identified were supporting food recovery businesses in the area that could address waste and also be a business opportunity, supporting growing zones, smart production among farm businesses, knowing the unique growing environment here in Flagstaff, supporting local food distribution businesses, and then also creatively supporting growing zones, smart production on city-owned spaces, and making that an opportunity as well too. So with that, I'm happy to open it up to you for any questions that you might have about the community engagement aspect.
You don't have internet access?
Yeah.
Oh. Councilmember House, was your question in, in general or about this specific aspect?
About this?
Councilmember House, will you ask your question, please?
[laughing]
And then Councilmember Matthews. Sorry.
Thank you all for the presentation and congratulations, Stephen, on your Aspen Award as well. I, I had two questions, actually. So I'll, I'll start with the second one because Sarah, you mentioned specifically the pivot that was made to, to start centering Indigenous perspectives. And I'm curious as to what led to that shift or to that pivot.
Great question. I think it was looking at the demographics within that first iteration of the phase and then just understanding the census in Flagstaff and beyond and really thinking that there could be potential nuances that weren't being captured potentially within the other five conversations and really wanting to center an opportunity for Indigenous community members and families to really have a space to express their concerns, any barriers, and then ways to move forward was kind of the thought process. It's just like that intentionality of that space dedicated to our Indigenous community members.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And then the second question is just kind of in general with the results of the study and with some of the focus areas that were shared. I'm wondering about, I've heard so much from the community in recent years about the idea of urban orchards, urban food forests, things like that, and just the possibility of community fruit and not bearing trees or gardens, orchards, whatever we're, we're calling it. And I'm wondering if that came up at all during the conversation and if that's something that we're looking into or just how it's being considered.
Yeah, Mayor Daggett, Councilmember House, thank you so much. That's an excellent question. It did come up very frequently and I think to that last priority of trying to provide opportunities, especially to grow food on city-owned spaces, was that opportunity of not just having plants and trees in those spaces, but food-producing plants and trees in those spaces. And especially for those that may not have space to grow at their own homes or if they're in apartments, that there's this opportunity to take advantage of city-owned space to make that feel possible. So that absolutely came up. And it also came up that the wind and the environment here and the soil can be tough and understanding how to do that. So if that happens, it needs to be accompanied with some education and support to make that feel possible.
And just to add on, I was reminded that there, through funds, through BBB grants, there was a, a, a small food orchard planted at Bushmaster Park recently. And so that is one of the initiatives or one aspect for pursuing increasing food production within the city of Flagstaff. So that is one initiative. A few weeks ago, Tiffany Antall was before you presenting zoning code changes to include urban farming as an allowable use on PF zones, so public facilities, so that's city-owned property. So already starting to pursue some of these areas. And with the information from these community conversations, we're taking tho, that, those themes with our contractor for Phase Three to develop the food action plan, to pull out some more specific goals and objectives to how we can increase these opportunities and what avenues to, to look into.
Thank you all.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm coming back up again on my computer. So, you know, I'm just thinking, I have enough space on my property where I have a greenhouse, I have a little area to grow vegetables. I'm attempting every year to bear fruit on, I have four or five fruit trees. The weather, as you mentioned, the short growing cycle. Even when I've had a successful growing season with my vegetables, you know, it's therapeutic. It's a mental health thing, I think, for people up here because it definitely doesn't sustain you. I, I do canning, so the only thing I can grow in good quantity is tomatoes and I can can those. So I'm just, I, I'm thinking about this and I'm, I belong to a couple of Facebook groups that share, you know, we, Arizona allows you to have cottage, you know, bakeries, but not food prep sources. And there's sharing in these groups, you know, like, hey, I've got this, or come and get some seeds, or just today, Forestale Farms posted, they have a lot of composting, you know, now fertilizer to come back in. So are you engaged with the communities within Flagstaff that are already, you know, supporting each other and talking about, you know, how we can, like, I can't sustain myself on my, and I have a pretty big footprint of it. You know, last year I was out of town and we had a frost in May and it killed every blossom on my fruit trees. And so, you know, it's just, it's a big struggle. And when I go to the, the farmer's market, a lot of the grower, people that are bringing fruits and vegetables here are coming from Verde Valley, right? That's more success, you know, successful down there. So is that factored into the, I mean, I love, you know, community farming and, and, because I do it, and, and expanding this, but I don't know that I see yet how maybe recovering food waste is a good business. But, but I see we have so many challenges up here to really be as robust as even just 50 miles down the road where people could grow year-round and stuff like that. Can you speak on that? Like, have you thought about overcoming those challenges?
Yeah. Mayor Daggett, Councilmember Matthews, I'm happy to speak to what we heard from community and then I can turn it back over to, to my colleagues here that can speak to the efforts that are happening. So we did have Forestale actually participated as a stakeholder in these. And several of the folks that participated, participated in these community engagement sessions are growing in some capacity already. And there was various levels of interest as to those that were interested in growing to a big production capacity and those that just like wanted to grow to support their to a big production capacity and those that just like wanted to grow to support their community. And I think similar to your experience, there's room for all of it and that's what people want. They want to be able to see all of that supported from the Forestale Farms to somebody who's just growing, you know, in, in a pot on their patio as well, too. And from the food waste perspective, most of that dialogue and the engagement was more so around grocery stores and restaurants tackling food recovery rather than just the farmers trying to do that themselves. But I'll let my colleagues speak to efforts that are happening.
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. In addition to everything Adrian just mentioned, things that we are pursuing within food systems in general, it's like what we're talking about today is just one piece of the massive puzzle to help combat hunger in our area and increasing food access. If you've had an opportunity to read through the most recent versions of the regional plan, food systems and increasing food access is written into the regional plan. So broadening the scope beyond simply Flagstaff because it's a regional thing. And there are many resources out there that we want to tap into to increase food access within our community and the surrounding areas. In addition to the zoning code changes and other initiatives with community gardens and urban farms, we are always exploring new opportunities. I've just recently had a conversation with our folks in economic development about writing up a scope of work to put out for bid for a business, a business feasibility study specifically around food recovery to see if there is a, a, a way or a viable way for a business to start up to take some of those items that would end up in the trash or the compost. We're trying to get food into people's hands before we even think about composting or throwing it out. So just trying to do a full circuit there. And with our partnerships with Flagstaff Food Link, I'll turn it over to Sarah to share a little bit more about some of those person, more personal connections with growers in the area and some other food systems-related initiatives that we are a part of with a lot of different groups and people.
And, and just before she steps on, just a comment on that. I know that the food bank, I know they already get food from the local grocery stores. And then the stuff that's too far gone, the vegetables and fruit, the farmers come and get them in trailer and truckloads to feed their livestock. So I was always under the impression that our food recovery, maybe, and maybe I'm thinking a different way. It goes to the food bank and it may be close to the expiration date, but it's still safe to eat and it, and it is distributed to people, you know, in the food distributions. So is there a different level in food recovery that we're not addressing here yet?
Thank you for, for that question. So there are, in my mind, the easiest way to think about it in that sense is we have the retail environment of, say, there's a grocery store and the food bank goes and collects things. And then we have restaurants, hot food recovery. So that side of it is an area that our, our community has not explored or embraced fully at, at this point, and that's something that we're looking into. And after speaking with folks at Flagstaff Family Food Center, they don't always have availability to go and pick up from the grocery stores when it's time to come and pick it up. So there is an opportunity in that space, like, where are those gaps at? Yeah, yeah, of course.
And thank you for that question. I farm as well. I work with Forestale and Super Yard Farms, so I understand the challenges of growing in this climate immensely hard, yet I'm excited when in conversation with the Coconino Grower Coalition and we meet once a month to have very similar conversations about how do we collaborate? How do we get organized to write grants together and to start to ameliorate some of these challenges through collaborations? So that to me makes me really, really excited and hopeful as we continue to work together. There's about 13 to 19 people that show up, farmers, ranchers, beginner growers, just trying to all figure it out together and to support each other moving forward. There's also, also the Hunger Action Partnership with the food bank and our colleagues here who are part of this group and very similar about how to address hunger and food access concerns and food insecurity. And I'm trying to think about ways to bridge this gap between farmers and between the food bank even more. There's also programs like Purchase Local, the Double Up Food Bucks Program, like all of these different initiatives to me bring a lot of hope when there's a lot of collaboration and organization and strength within the food system and only growing it. I'm seeing more and more people in Doni Park starting to grow. And through my role at Flagstaff Food Link, I'm excited because we have like the Beginner Farmer and Rancher Resource Fair is coming up next week. It's a gathering of about 60 people who have very similar mindsets as we do. And we're providing resources and a deeper understanding of these challenges and how to move forward. And then with Food Link, we do have the community events and educational workshops and grants for beginner farmers and ranchers. So it feels like there's a lot of things going on and a lot of excitement and momentum towards strengthening the local and regional food system in our area.
Well, thank you for that and all, all of you. It's exciting to see that collaboration and seeing what, what else we can do, especially with the challenges that we face up here in Flagstaff in the surrounding area. I keep looking at my greenhouse. I, I fell last year and everything got frozen when I was gone, so there's nothing alive in there, but it's a challenge we, a lot of us have up here. So I appreciate all the focus and effort you guys are putting into it. So thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of our goals here in Flagstaff is to become a more sustainable city. And the, the, the model of, of, of this in terms of reducing vehicle miles traveled is to implement the concept of a 15-minute city where a person can walk or bike 15 minutes to do the majority of, of their daily activities, shopping, going to church, going to school. So here in our town, we have two Safeway Stores, a Fries, a Walmart, two Walmarts, and the Sam's Club. These are grocery chains. They have an endless supply of everything you could want. And because of their volume, they are able to offer volume pricing. They bring things in by the, by the semi-truck load and, and people go out with shopping carts full of, full of food if they can afford it. So my question is, what can we do as a city to put local grocery stores on an even footing with the big box chain grocery outlets? You know, we're, we're looking at development along JW Powell. Is there anything that we can do to incentivize a local grocery store coming up? There may be some, but I, I really haven't seen them. So any ideas on that?
Mayor Daggett, Councilmember Spence, thank you for that question. And I think the sentiment that you just offered there is exactly what we heard from community members, was this desire for smaller community neighborhood embedded spaces where folks could access food. Some examples of where that is already happening that we heard in the community conversations was a love for the community fridges that are out there as a source of support. So that's something that people recognized. Flagstaff CSA is a brick and mortar site, is something that's appreciated and people said we want to see more of that as well, too. But I think what you speak to is going to happen in this next phase, in the third phase where that action plan gets developed, where more robust strategies like that can kind of get put into action if that's desired. But what you shared there matches exactly what we heard from all of the community members as well.
Thank you. I, you know, those, those big box chain stores, there certainly are a few people that live within a 15-minute walk and you do see people carrying grocery bags or a wagon from those stores, walking to their home or bicycling with food in their cargo space. But that's a relatively, my guess is, it's a relatively small proportion of our population. Almost all people drive their vehicles to get to those big box stores to do their grocery shopping. So my hope is, I need to do more thought investment on this, but my hope is that we could offer those, suppose there are some people that want to set up a local grocery store in any community. Maybe there are ways that they can get a price point advantage by using locally sourced food or recovered food to have an, an economic advantage over the big box store. So it's something that I'd like to look into as time goes forward.
Well, thank you for this great presentation. I know from talking to the Flagstaff Family Food Center that they have seen hunger in the region grow at an alarming pace since COVID. So this is a, a real issue that we need to get a handle on and, and Flagstaff Family Food Center and, and other organizations like them that try to provide food to people need the assistance of the community to help them do that. I think when we're getting ready or, or soon in the future, we'll be redeveloping publicly-owned housing to increase density. And I think talking about having community gardens at them makes sense, as does perhaps when we, when we build new parks, including community gardens. It's great to see them in all kinds of neighborhoods. So I think that that's only a, a positive. The, the Flagstaff community market, the, the summer market, I've, I've spoken to people about the double-up bucks and the community market and, and whether it's a perception or it's a reality that the food is more expensive and so it doesn't really make sense. I'm wondering if, if there have been any conversations about how to make the, that market more accessible or valued by a greater demographic of our community?
Yeah, Mayor Daggett, thank you for that question. That came up as well in the community conversations, both in perceptions of price and the realities of price, as well as what's felt to be a need to increase awareness of double-up food bucks. I think in the, again, the next phase, when you develop the Food Action Plan, there can be some actionable items that happen around both of those things, which is first, increasing awareness, like public campaigns around opportunities like that that are helping to address cost barriers, especially as it relates to local foods, and also even other opportunities, matching programs, different business and tax incentives and different things like that that could get put into place that might be able to tackle that. But what you're sharing is also something that we heard from community as well. And it's real that sometimes local foods do cost more, not all the time, but sometimes they do just because it's a smaller business operation. And so trying to find a way to make that a competitive market takes some creativity.
Thank you. And I know that the, the Congress has proposed a budget that decreases funding for SNAP and some of the other food assistance programs, which of course, you know, I don't support and I'm sure a lot of other people don't support it as well. But looking at this program and what you're doing and, and that it's funded by the USDA, is there a concern about a cut to funding for this type of work going forward?
Mayor Daggett, I'll speak to what community shared and only their perspective and then I can allow the city to speak as well, too. Absolutely. So oftentimes in the community conversations, folks mentioned how they were getting enhanced benefits during the pandemic and then when that went away, how detrimental it has been and that they haven't been able to recover from it. And when you think about SNAP benefits for a senior, a senior, single, one person in a household, they're lucky if they get $16 to $18 a month. So when you're thinking about how to stretch your food dollars on that, that's really challenging. So it's absolutely a concern that we heard in the community food conversations. So I hope that that is something that can also get prioritized in the Food Action Plan, but I'll let the city speak to what some of the other things are that they have going on, too.
Thinking about programs like SNAP, that's coordinated by the county. And we are in constant communication with the representatives who promote and provide education on SNAP benefits to, throughout the, the county. So they are pivotal part of the Food Action Planning Steering Committee and will be involved throughout the entire process. As far as like future funds, we're always concerned about where the money's going to come from. So no, whether it's from federal, state, local nonprofits or other foundations, we will pursue as many opportunities as we are legally allowed to. For this project continuing forward, we started working on this in 2023. And by the end of this calendar year, we hope to bring to you for approval, for adoption, for a Food Action Plan. And we will continue to operate as business as normal for completing this project unless our grants and contracts team says otherwise.
Well said. Thank you so much. I don't see any additional questions, but so appreciate your time and the work. This is incredibly important to our community. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the questions and the time.
All right, we are moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act Local Recovery Fund update.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Stacey Breckland-Aggs, Grants, Contracts, and Emergency Management. Thanks for the shout out, Stephen, for our office. We're very busy with grants, as you all know. And thanks to the team members and people that have hung in here along with yourself today to go through this presentation. But before I start, I want to recognize some staff that have worked with this since 2021. That was in May of '21, after COVID, we submitted our first application for ARPA. And in June, we received our first half of the payment for the 13-plus million dollars. I was able to hire and promote Morgan Mulaney, and you're going to stand, she doesn't like this, but I actually was able to promote her to focus just on ARPA. So her, that's all she's been doing is doing ARPA. We knew that we could not do this without assistance. We didn't really want to go out and hire a consultant. So we were able to have an in-house staff promoted to just focus on ARPA, along with Glorice, our senior accountant in finance. She was also assigned to ARPA and has been nonstop working on ARPA. And then we had an attorney, Christine Keener, that was also worked with us on all the agreements. A lot of it did not, it was not a procurement type of thing. It was an outside agreement with our vendors or our United Way or Creative Flagstaff. And so she was instrumental also. And then Megan oversees is our grants and contracts manager. If you haven't met her, she's fairly new. How, how long now? Couple of years?
One and a half.
One and a half. So Megan Dales is our grants and contracts manager. And then also there's a few people that stayed here in the crowd that I just want to mention. Housing, Christine Pavlik, Marissa Malloy worked with us. There was a lot of housing funds that were used in far as economic vitality. Trace Ward, you saw him earlier today, David McIntyre, Craig Zaneco that are here. Thank you for being here to support. Prose, Haley Reynolds was also very instrumental in helping us spend these funds. And then Shannon Anderson is in the back. Thanks, Shannon, is working, has worked a lot on the Community Bastard Program and some other ARPA programs with us. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump into the presentation. So update on, so I think everybody knows what ARPA is, American Rescue Plan Act for state and local recovery funds. It provided substantial infusion of resources to help turn the tide in the pandemic and address the economic fallout and lay of the foundation for the strong equitable recovery. So as, as you heard, we, you know, we So as, as you heard, we, you know, we started this in May of 21 and then hit it hard with you all to get our funds expended. So the city received thirteen point two million. In September seventh of 21, the council allocated categories, and I think you, some of you, I know, Mayor Daggett, you were involved, and others that, you know, we had a long list of eligible categories. I think they had over sixty six, sixty plus categories, and that we had to fine tune it down to what worked for us and our community to use for those categories. And then in April of 22, the Department of Treasury, who this money ran through, came out with new guidance, and they kept coming out with guidance because I think they were learning how to spend these funds also. And they said, we will allow ten million in standard allowance. And so we were able to take ten million off of that and create it as non-federal. So the three million became, three point two became designated ARPA federal funds, and that was required by federal requirements, all the federal grant provisions that are associated with that. And so we ended up with eleven ARPA programs. And then the balance, the ten million that we created as governmental, for governmental services, we were able to do that without federal requirements, which is, I think is interesting. We still ran it like it was ARPA funds. You still allocated that money towards all your categories. They just had less restrictions. They just had less things that we had to follow with them. But we still treated it like it was a federal grant. We still worked with our agencies to do that. And then the guidance put a restriction. They said, you must have by December thirty first of twenty four, they said, you have to obligate all your funds. And so when they say obligated, that meant by you have to have a signed contract. You have to have these funds obligated and a contract with whoever you're going to award those funds to. And then by December, you had to expend the funds, by December of twenty six. So this next slide is awesome. And I'm happy to be here. And I know, Mayor, you and I've talked, we've wanted to, to share an update where we were with ARPA funds since it's been long going. But you can see how many we have completed. And we are so close on some of these, the Community Ambassador Program. We've, we've obligated it, we're just drawing down, and they're just expending the funds. Housing Assistance, we're fifty percent there. And, and then again, on the nonprofit victim services, we're about twenty five percent. But we have time to spend it till twenty, December of twenty six. We'd like to get this done sooner, but I think this shows a lot to, to Glorice, Christina, and Morgan for their work on really working actively with these agencies to get this money spent. And get it out in the community. I think that was, that was the council's goal, right? To get this money and get it fast, get it out in the community and get, get them need, their needs filled. So I'm going to, real quick, just walk through each of the categories and what they did. So in the Congregate Care, we had three agencies that were awarded funding to combat the spread of COVID. Amongst Residents of Shelters, Traditional Supportive Housing and Emergency Housing Facilities. And then the Community Ambassador Program that Shannon's been working on and was, was awarded to provide downtown ambassador services. Housing Assistance, other, had a couple agencies there that were awarded funding to assist in housing stability and eviction prevention. Housing Assistance on Affordable Housing, at three agencies awarded funding to create, improve, and provide affordable housing options. And then Housing Assistance for Services for Unhoused, three agencies were awarded funding for housing and related services for unhoused youth, adults, and families. Next is the Job Training Assistance. We awarded funding to innovative local businesses to implement a workforce training and fellowship program to promote expanded, unique sector that was recently been identified as a focus area for economic development, strategic plan, and that was David and his team. And then we did aid to nonprofits, victim services. Three agencies were awarded funding for services to victims of crime, including domestic violence. Next, and this is all federal that I'm going through first, is all those federal dollars, that three point two. We did local event support. You funded various local event producers to ease the burden of the fees and permitting costs of hosting local community events. You did education assistance, early learning. They funded through United Way, which was a really nice opportunity for us. We ended up contracting with United Way to help kind of spread the, the workload with this. And so they were able to, we entered into a contract with them to pass through the monies, and then United Way opened up opportunities for people to submit applications and get funded. So they awarded three agencies for preschool and early learning related programs, which included impacted and disproportionately impacted communities. Again, on the federal, we're almost done on federal funds, supported filling vacancies and promotion of Team Flagstaff. This was used for marketing to potential employees and fill job opportunities created by the, the COVID. And then lastly, we use a little bit of money for administration of funds. Early on, we had our staff bill against the administration portion of it. Later, we started not needing that funds, and we're able to move it around to other categories. All right. So your ten million that was for governmental services, which was your standard allowance that we could use. We still, again, we applied that to ARPA categories that you selected. And so you can see here all the non-federal stuff that was done. And again, these, these were handled very much the same as federal funds. We just, we held them at the highest level. We treat all our grants at a federal level, so we pass audits and everything. So these were held very similar, just didn't have as much grant provisions attached to their contracts. But you can see, all of them are complete, with the exception of the education assistance facility. I know Greg has been very involved with Public Works on that, and we're at fifty percent complete of spending those monies. And then broadband, we held off one point five million in this governmental services. And that was to help CJ's team and IT, if he come, gets to a point where he has a grant option, that he has the match, and he's getting there. He's working with our, our providers. And I think this will be used here pretty quickly as he continues with his provider services. And they are looking for federal grants that are, are starting to come out, and state grants. So he'll be able to use this as a match. So what was funded with non-federal? Forty-two. I think this is big, small business assistance. So we use federal and non-federal, but we ended up funding forty-two local businesses, received funding to help overcome the challenges, and included restaurants, therapists, artists, retail, like, there was a ton. So that's, that's a big impact to our community. So you should all be proud of that. We did aid to nonprofits, arts and science. This is another one where, as United Way helped us, we asked Creative Flagstaff to help us and get the funding out to the art, arts and sciences. So we entered into a contract with Creative Flagstaff, and then they opened it up to vendors that could apply and receive the money. So they did the administration of the grant. So that was very helpful. And they did a great job with that and helped with the arts and sciences experience, you know, negative impacts. Next is aid to nonprofits, food. We awarded funding, again, to United Way to help distribute this to three agencies. They were able to do, per the applicants that submitted, to help combat the food insecurity issues in our community. And then they also helped distribute to sixteen agencies on behalf of the city for shelters, literacy, cancer patients, children, mental health, community centers, et cetera. So they opened up a solicitation and were able to fund sixteen agencies through that. We did aid to tourism with Trace Ward and his team on tourism, travel, and hospitality. This was a really big category. I know Morgan was happy when the last, last one was, was done with the twenty-two local tourism-related businesses that were some of the hardest economically and during COVID. And, and some of those were restaurants, breweries, coffee shops, theaters, hotels. So twenty-two businesses were, were covered under this. And then the education assistance, the facility construction, where we allocated funds for construction of the educational center at Joel Montavo, the former fire station. Next is premium pay for public safety. This was also a very beneficial use of the funds. We used funding to increase pay for the employees in the police and emergency communication roles. And then broadband, I talked a little bit about it, that it's planned to match, you know, that larger infrastructure improvement that we're looking to do with broadband and And so with that, that gives me drum roll, over a hundred different, thank you, a hundred different small businesses and nonprofit agencies were awarded funding. So that's big. I think, I think just from the day one, since in twenty-one, when we got this funding and got it out to the community to be able to help a hundred agencies is, is huge. Morgan actually does have a list of those agencies. If you do want to see it, we can hand it, hand it on either side, if you'd like to. And then you can just kind of pass it to each other, but just to kind of scan it and see some of the agencies that we funded of those hundred. And, but there's, they're all over the board, and it's, it's pretty exciting. Thank you, Morgan. And thank you again for all your work and, and everybody's work on this. So in addition to dozens of community events were supported and local businesses were contracted. And then just any questions? I think that list is telling. When you, when you get it to you, quite, quite a few and quite a hurdle. We'll be happy to, we were happy to get the funding, but we're going to be happy when we're, we're done closing out this, this grant fund. So with that, hopefully that was short and sweet.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. No questions, just wanted to say kudos and congratulations for, for getting these funds allocated. And also, thank you for getting them out to these hundreds of, well, a hundred organizations. But seriously, the impact of this is, is huge and can't be understated for all of the community organizations and community members that these funds really touched and impacted and benefited over time. So very grateful for the work and the labor and the collaboration that went into getting this done. So thank you all.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and you know, five thousand dollars helped them, even if it was small amounts to them. That five thousand, you know, to their business, to their nonprofit or their small business was really helpful. And so, yeah, we were on a mission to get those funds out in the community, as small or large as they were, to all the agencies.
Vice Mayor.
Just real quick, another thank you. It was a very interesting time, scary for small businesses. And I remember I was up here advocating for some of this money to go to the small business community, and I'm just so thankful that we had it and you spent it, and it went to good places and made a huge difference. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, and I appreciate, I know you guys were, I'm glad we were able to fulfill your mission and goals to get this out in the community. Took a lot of effort from a lot of staff here. I've missed others that are on this list, I'm sure, but it was. And, and thank you for, you know, for your support to, to push us and, and get us, get us there to the finish line and get this out in the community.
I'll add to the thanks. This money came along at such an important time, and, and it was a scary time. And I think that allocating these funds to the different categories was one of the best things that I've been able to participate in on council, to really be thinking about who in the community is most impacted by this pandemic and how can we help them. And I know it was no small feat to set up the structure to accept these funds, to make sure that they're allocated correctly, to track them, and to actually get them out into the hands of the businesses and nonprofits. So thank you. I mean, because that was something that was handed to you, and you had to act very quickly, including interpreting where it could go, so that you could educate us about where the money was allowed to go.
I think you're remembering that council meeting with me, where we were like, I don't know, can it go to this, can it go to that? There were so many restrictions and so many things. And it was a difficult meeting to figure out of the categories what was best for our community. And I think you, council, mayor, and council really did a good job of honing that in and figuring out that these are the categories we want to do, go forth and do it. So appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Great presentation. Thank you for this list. And we are moving down to an overview of the Water Services Division.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I am Lee Williams with Water Services, and I'm here to give you a brief overview of what Water Services does. If you have any questions, I'm not sure if I'm breaking protocol, but feel free to interrupt me, and I will answer those questions as we go. All right. Water Services, when I finish giving the overview of Water Services, this is mostly for new council members. Returning council members, perhaps you'll glean some information from it also. Erin and Tamra and conservation staff will come up here and give you an overview of what they do to make sure we have enough water for the future and what we do to conserve the water that we have. Water Services is consists, consists of six sections. There's a section director for each one. There is field operations, plant operations, stormwater, engineering, regulatory compliance, and resource management. I will dive deeper into each one of these very briefly in just a few minutes here. Our overarching responsibilities are to provide drinking water to the City of Flagstaff, provide wastewater treatment, and to help move stormwater either out of our city or through our city if it originates on the national forest. Plant Operations, that's me, Lee Williams, my section. We consist of three separate programs. Water, which is responsible for all potable water needs for the city. Water Reclamation, which takes care of the wastewater treatment. And SCADA, which is our, basically kind of our, they don't, I always say this, they don't like it when I call them this, but they're our IT section, basically. They take care of all of our communications and computer infrastructure. So our water consists of two plants for treatment. One, the Lake Mary Water Treatment Plant, comes out on Lake Mary Road. It pumps water from Upper Lake Mary and treats it to federal and state standards. It's capable of producing eight million gallons per day when running full steam twenty-four hours. Typically, they run two shifts. There's not a whole lot of need for running twenty-four hours unless it's in case of an emergency. We have a second plant that is up near the Schultz Pass Y, and it is our North Reservoir Filtration Plant. It only treats water that comes out of the inner basin of the San Francisco Peaks, and it runs seasonally, generally from about June through September or October. It filters water that is snowmelt. There's collection galleries up there, they collect the snowmelt. And then there's three off-grid wells that run on diesel power that don't quite meet state and federal standards, so they need just a little bit of treatment before they get put into the system. Water production also maintains the reservoirs around town. So we have reservoirs ranging anywhere from seventeen thousand gallons for the Kinnalani neighborhood, that's our smallest, to twelve million gallons up near the Schultz Pass Y. We have a total of twenty-one million gallons of storage. Because Flagstaff is a diverse environment, as far as terrain is concerned, we have booster stations which pump water from the lower elevations to the higher elevations to provide water to those higher neighborhoods. Erin can talk more about our future water needs, but we are, we just drilled a well out near Tuthill two years ago. We're in the process of equipping a wellhouse to be able to turn that into potable water. And in two thousand and seven, with voter approval, the city purchased Red Gap Ranch out east of here for future water rights. So we're working through the logistics of eventually pumping that water to Flagstaff as a potable source. Move on to Water Reclamation. They treat the wastewater, they turn it into reclaimed water. We have two plants. There's one located in the middle of the city, near, off of Babbitt Lane, kind of near Sam's Club. It is capable of doing four million gallons per day, currently only running at about half capacity right now. We just don't have the amount of wastewater coming from the kind of Bow and Arrow and downtown areas to run it at full steam. As buildout starts to happen in that southwest part of town, more water will be pumped through that plant. And then we have an end-of-the-line plant out near the east end of town. It's called Wildcat, and it has a capacity of six million gallons per day. It's called Wildcat, and it has a capacity of 6 million gallons per day. They treat sewage to state and federal standards. They produce A-plus reclaimed water and they handle the solids. The SCADA program is IIOT. That stands for Industrial Internet of Things. So basically like our own little internet, they maintain all the communications, every site that Water Services has. I don't know the number. I know Water Production has 56 sites. And then throw in some reservoirs and the wastewater treatment plants and a few other places, it's probably close to 100. So there's all these instruments, they're collecting flow, they're collecting pH, they're collecting chlorine residual, and they all need to talk to sent, to a central computer. So SCADA team is responsible for maintaining all of that infrastructure. They also have a GIS section, so they map everything for us, all of our underground piping. You can't see it from the streets, so it's their job to make sure they can, the crews can pull out their phone and know if they're standing on top of a pipeline. And then, as I mentioned before, the communications between all of those sites. Field operations, this is Patrick O'Connor's section. There's two programs in that one. There's water distribution and wastewater collections. So going back a slide, water, puts water into the pipes, they treat it, they make sure it's drinking quality. People use it, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. They put water, they treat the water, they put it into the pipes. And then, once it's in the pipes, it's Patrick O'Connor's responsibility to make sure that water makes it to your house or your business. They deliver water from our sources to our customers. There's 450 miles of water mains. They also maintain the Purple Pipe System with the reclaimed water. And they are on-call 24/7, 365 days a year. If there's water leaking out of a meter slowly or water geysering out of the middle of the road at any time of day, give them a call and they will be there to make sure that we are not wasting that water. After that water is used by our customers, it goes down into the sewer pipes, also known as the collection system. Collects used water from customers and conveys it to the treatment plants. There's sewer pipes, manholes, and soon-to-be lift stations, perhaps. There are 281 miles of sewer mains, and just like the water distribution crew, they are on-call all year. All right, on to stormwater. This is Ed Schenk's section. They safely convey runoff through our city and out of our city. They maintain the drainages. If there's trees growing in them, brush growing in them, they go through and they clean them out. If debris is building up, sediment is building up, they haul that away. They maintain the storm sewer in general. They construct, improve, and maintain the infrastructure. They're responsible for code enforcement, so if there's water running from one neighbor's property to another's property, they can call and Ed's crew will come out and see what they can do about it. And they have a lot of overlap with the county and the United States Forest Service because much of the stormwater that caused the flooding in the last few years did not originate in Flagstaff. It fell on the burn scars up on the peaks and flowed into the city. They also conduct plan review for any new builds in Flagstaff to make sure that they meet the runoff requirements. And then there's the engineering section headed by Mac McNamara. Their job is to design and construct any kind of new infrastructure that we have. So they work closely with staff and engineering firms. They design facility upgrades. They design plant rehab. Several of our plants or a few of our plants have very old components, so trying to upgrade those, bring them up to moderate standards. They oversee construction and they plan, review, they review plans for new development. And then the last one, want to make sure that the water we are putting into the pipes is safe, make sure it's potable, make sure it reads, meets state and federal requirements. And that is our compliance section headed by Jolene Montoya. We have two certified labs, one in the drinking water plant, one in the wastewater plant. They do water quality testing both at the plant and out in the distribution system. Pictured here is Krista Snow. She is taking a sample at one of our wellhouses. She and her team also take 70 samples per month throughout the city. They go out to the far reaches of the city to make sure that the potable water has a chlorine residual, to make sure there's no pathogens growing in it, make sure the pH is good, check chlorine residual, et cetera. They do a lot of writing and filing of reports to ADEQ. ADEQ is Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They oversee everything we do. And they work with the plant staff and the state to make sure that we are in compliance. And if there's any kind of an issue, then they're kind of the liaison between us and ADEQ to make sure that issue is resolved. And with that, I am going to hand it over to Erin Young unless anybody has any questions.
Greg just noted that you all were also recipients of recent excellence awards.
We were, thank you. Yeah, the team out at Wildcat received a City Manager Award. And the crew at the Rio de Flag Plant also received an environmental stewardship award, which I will be sending out a notice for shortly.
Nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Aslan has a question.
Thank you, real quickly. And this is a serious question. Why does Flagstaff's tap water taste better than any other municipality in the state?
First and foremost, thank you for the compliment. And it's, I think it's a combination of things. One, it's generally colder, and I think most people's palates enjoy cold water. Two, it has pretty low total dissolved solids compared to the water in the valley. So there's a lot of minerals in the water, and that's what we call total dissolved solids, so magnesium, calcium, et cetera, maybe some sodium. And then also because it's cooler here, we don't need to maintain as high of a chlorine residual. This is all my opinion. Some, some of this is science and some is my opinion, because I also think it tastes great. But you don't need to maintain as high of a chlorine residual in cold water because pathogens don't grow as quickly in cold water as they do in warm water. So we strive to put the water into the pipes at one part per million for chlorine. And in the, in the valley, I've never actually looked through their consumer confidence reports, but I've heard they put it in at about three to four parts per million. So if you're sensitive to that chlorine odor, then that's going to taste off or have kind of an off odor to you.
Great question. Thank you. All right, that's the only question that I see so far.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll wrap it up before I hand it off to Erin. If anybody's interested in a tour of our facilities, can you give me a show of hands? And then we'll set something up to take you out there and show you how we do what we do. Okay, I've got one or two.
We're going to ask Erin harder questions.
All right. Yeah, save them for Erin, please. All right, thank you very much.
Hello, Erin Young, Water Resources Section Director. And thank you for the opportunity to prevent, provide you with more of an overview of what our individual sections do. And then Tamra will dive into the water conservation program. I have with us our small but mighty water conservation team. We have Jeffrey and Emily and Jennifer and of course Tamra. Small but mighty. In, I think it was around 2014, City Council had a goal to be a national leader in water conservation. And from my view, we have achieved that. We are national leaders. And also on water resources management in the state of Arizona, we're a leader as a rural community, holding ourselves to standards that the valley or the active management area communities practice within. So I just wanted to share a little bit about that program. My, my program work includes monitoring of our aquifer systems and sort of forecasting surface water into the long-term, our long-term aquifer withdrawals. And of course, projects like Red Gap Ranch. We're constantly updating our water demand and forecasting models, so how much water the community will need over time. We tie the regional plan, the voter-approved regional plan, the undeveloped lands to water demand, and then we match that with water supplies. Program handles water rights management, and we represent the city on regional water-related groups and organizations such as NAMWA, Northern Arizona Municipal Waters Association, and the Coconino Plateau Watershed Partnership, Water Reuse Arizona. Have a number of partner contracts with US Geological Survey and other organizations. And the program oversees locating ground, future groundwater wells. Our water supplies over time have grown. We're currently importing up to two-thirds of our water resource from outside of the Flagstaff city limits, which is, when we talk about future projects like Red Gap, sometimes we forget that we're already importing water, and we've been doing so since around 1900 when we imported water from the inner basin, spring water. So the stacked graphs kind of indicate water resource development each year. The orange on the bottom is inner basin spring water. We use that as we have it. That infrastructure system is degrading, however, and a lot of our capital projects target improving that system. It's leaky. And so we get spring water, but not 100% of it comes to the filtration plant. We'd like to get 100% and not have leakage. That's why at the beginning of this graph toward kind of the 1950s to the 1980s, there's more water. After the 1980s, that supply is kind of dwindling. It's not necessarily that it's not water within the inner basin, it's, it could also be just infrastructure degradation. The big, the next stack up, kind of the thicker unit is the Upper Lake Mary supply. And that variability is largely tied to, you know, seasonal, kind of more after several years of, of not getting infiltration into the lake, we can't generate as much water from the lake. So there's some seasonal variability there. But it's also how we operate the lake. We used to operate the lake maybe 24/7 before we had all these other groundwater resources. And now that we have groundwater resources, we don't have to operate the lake at full go, 24/7, 365 days a year. So when we look at graphs like this, it's just important to think about, kind of think outside the box, that it's not necessarily a supply limited chart or patterns. The lighter green, woody mountain wells, we started drilling wells in the 1950s, so you can see that supply being utilized back to, into the 50s. Inner basin wells came online in about the 1970s. And then moving up to the dark blue, the Lake Mary Well Field was starting, we started drilling there in the 1970s. And then it wasn't until the 1990s that that brighter blue, the local wellfield, wells within city limits were, were drilled. And, and now that's a very big piece of the annual pie. 75% of our water resources are located in a forested landscape as well. So Upper Lake Mary, as you know, and the Woody Mountain Well Field, and susceptible to catastrophic wildfire and drought impacts. So that's why we're continuing to expand all the options that we have so we can continually provide water into the long term. We focus 100, 100 years out. The hydrogeology, so the subsurface is not just sand and gravel. It is hard rock that is fractured. If you think about going to the Grand Canyon and looking at, at, you know, thousands of feet of rock, well, that's what we're drilling through here in Flagstaff, targeting groundwater flowing through fracture and fault systems. So I just wanted to remind us that these wells are expensive to drill. We use, we use fun kind of geophysical methods to image the subsurface of the earth. So this image in the middle is from our geophysical work that we do, just looking for where there's water in the subsurface. So in this case, the yellow indicates where the rock is wet, and the purple is where the rock is very dense with no water. This is thousands of feet deep, and we use geophysics like this to help us target where we might get at least 300 gallons a minute. And that, that's our average well production. And the chart on the left is just showing all the geological layers that, that we drill through for that sea aquifer. That's a Don Bills sketch, and Don Bills is on our water commission. Many of you know him. And on the right is a surface geologic map just showing fracture mapping. So these are the tools we use to locate wells. Planning for 100 years, our designation of adequate water supply. This is the framework we use to, the framework we use to plan for long-term water. And this is through the Arizona Department of Water Resources. This is a voluntary program, but City Council gave staff direction to, to obtain a designation around 2008, and it took us until 2013 to get our final designation of adequate water supply. This ties growth to water resources and is a community security for investing in Flagstaff. We're one of few rural communities that have an actual designation of adequate water supply and not what everyone sort of got in the 70s. We actually went to the next, through all the five hoops to prove Flagstaff's water security. So we're very proud of this, even though it's kind of technical and, but it is something to boast about when you're among other council members and mayors around the state.
Erin?
Yes.
I just want to put a finer point on that and how big of a deal it is. And we'll often hear from people when they see something getting built, where's the water going to come from? And it's important for us and for the community to understand how well you all are planning for it, that you're taking population growth into account, you're tying it to the regional plan. So it's been, it's been thoughtfully considered how we're going to provide adequate water to our population for the next 100 years.
Yes. Yes. And that note, you know, the designation of adequate water supply is on all council-approved Platts. I don't know that anyone sees that, but it is on there. And I take that tracking to forecast shorter term when we need more water well infrastructure, but that longer term as well, 20 years and 100 years out. So thank you for being there.
Councilmember Matthews.
Just curious about Red Gap Ranch. When is your projections, assuming that comes online?
So we have many different scenarios in terms of, like, we have a baseline scenario of everything stays the same today in terms of groundwater from the local sea aquifer and making assumptions about Upper Lake Mary water resources and the stability of that supply. I think the date is like 2046. We're also making assumptions about the rate that people in our community are using water, so that gallons per capita, and that's where Tamra's program comes into play. We've established a GPCD goal, a 20-year goal to drop. At the time, we were at, I think, 100 GPCD when we adopted the plan, when council adopted Tamra's plan. And after 20 years, reaching 80 GPCD. If we hit that, that's an assumption. But if we don't hit that, it changes the, the timing of when a supply like Red Gap Ranch is needed. So it really is a range anywhere from 10 years and some more extreme conditions, maybe to 60 years.
So the, so the listing of Red Gap Ranch is just included in the 100-year plan, assuming that within 100 years, we would need to tap into that resource?
Yes, and it, it gets a bit more complicated with tracking our, you can see here, the current committed and projected demands listed in the table. It depends on how fast we might grow compared to the water supplies on the right. And if we, if we trigger that 14,000 acre foot number, we would need Red Gap Ranch. And we obtained our designation of adequate water supply based on our financial, based on our ability to fund a project like Red Gap Ranch. So by the, when we're going to trigger Red Gap Ranch, ADWR assumes that we can fund that supply and bring it online.
Thank you.
That was probably not a very articulate answer there.
No, it was very clear. Answered my question. Thank you, Erin.
There are a lot of factors when you start looking at details and start tracking of when we might need Red Gap. And another, we, looking at it differently, there are multiple benefits to a lot of our projects. Red Gap Ranch could have multiple benefits. Reasons we might construct a water source like that sooner than later is just because it provides resilience if we were to have a catastrophic fire and lose Woody Mountain Well Field for five years. Well Field for five years, and having to repair all that infrastructure, having backup supply would be, we'd all be very proud to have it if that were to happen. So that decision will come to you maybe, maybe sooner than later, I don't know, where we would share multiple benefits of, of our water future.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you help me with the math? In 2013, our population was probably, I'm just estimating, 70,000. How does that 1.2% growth per year of population, what number do you come up with in the year 2013?
I wonder if, I'm sorry, so if we had in, you'll have to repeat that.
Okay. I could go home and try to figure this out, but I'm looking for an easy answer. We were granted approval for our, our water system to, to meet the criteria to be an adequate supply for 100 years for the population that would be in the city of Flagstaff 100 years from now. And that, that point in time apparently was 2013, where we received the designation of adequate water supply for 100 years for the population at that time. My question is, when you run the number of population growth, starting in 2013, growing 1.2% per year in population, what number do you come up with as a population of Flagstaff in 2013?
Thank you for repeating your question. So how we, we, actually, if you run that projection, I think it's much higher than 172,000 people. We will likely cap, you know, we'll reach buildout, and that buildout will support some population density. So we use, you know, a population growth rate to determine how quickly we might need a new water resource. But then, once we reach that buildout density, it's a population cap in our, in how we do our forecasting.
Okay, so what did the state, the state granted us this award that we have 100-year supply? Were they, were they looking at 170,000 people in the city of Flagstaff limits?
So what they're looking at is a volume of water per acre of land, and how quickly we grow into that volume. It could be 1.2% growth rate, it could be 2% growth rate. So when we hit that trigger volume, this is a 20-year volume, the 14,839 acre feet per year, that's when ADWR will require possibly Red Gap Ranch, or they'll require us to remodel our water resources out 100 years. So it, it's, we're looking at the volume and not an exact population growth rate, if that helps.
Thank you. I get the picture that there, somebody either here or at the state level is using a Ouija board.
Ah, oh, shoot. Well, hopefully someday we can explain it so that it doesn't, it's really not a Ouija board, but it's just a bucket of water and how quickly we go through that bucket and need to keep proving ahead, so.
And I would just like to add that I think that that's an unfair assessment of how staff is projecting our water resources. It's, it's very thoughtful and science-based.
Yes.
I stand corrected.
It just like in the regional plan, you know, they're forecasting growth rates, but no one knows exactly what it is. And so in this case, we're just growing into our supplies and, yep. And that gets us to one of the scenarios that I'll present tonight is our base case scenario. And we're showing from 2022, just a couple of years ago, going forward, in this case, out to about 2080, assuming a population growth rate of 1.4%, and assuming a water use rate of 95 gallons per capita per day, we're just showing how we grow into future water supplies. But this is assuming we have 1,900 acre feet of surface water in Upper Lake Mary at the bottom, 2,200 acre feet of continuing to provide purple pipe reclaimed water. That's kind of maxes us out every year, so we keep providing that. In the brown is local groundwater, so from our Woody Mountain Well Field, Lake Mary Wells and inner city wells. And at, and these are the granted volumes of water in our designation of adequate water supply. So in this case, we would need a future, a new water resource in 2048. That could be Red Gap Ranch, but it could be a combination of other supplies. That gets us to 172,000 population around 2070.
Erin, pardon me for one moment. Sterling.
I appreciate it, Mayor. And Erin, you're doing a great job, and I appreciated your question, Councilmember Spence, and especially your clarification, Mayor. The, the amount of effort that has gone into projecting the population at a 1.4% growth rate, and seeing that that around 2080 puts it as, puts us at 172,000, it's been very scientific based on a gallons, it's GPCD gallons per capita daily. And that, that's something that in the water world, in determining the number of acre feet that the city will need in that 100-year assured water supply, there's, there's a lot of science to it, and there's been a lot of effort. So I'm, I'm doubling down essentially on what the mayor has indicated. There is a lot of data and, and science behind the need going forward.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I remember this question being answered, but it might be good and helpful to ask it right now. That, that number, 1.2, 1.4, where do we pull that from? Did the state assign that growth number? Is it in our research on, you know, the different analysts come in and?
That number, Mayor and Councilmember Matthews, that number typically comes out of our regional plan. So we try to match the regional plan, but then we might run scenarios. What if we're, you know, we have a smaller growth rate or higher growth rate? In this case, it was tied to the regional plan when we applied for our designation of adequate water supply. And I'd have to confirm if the 1.4, that, actually, that's our 40-year average. It's right here. That's our 40-year average.
I remembered this discussion last year, and I just couldn't remember what the answers were, so that's why I wanted to ask it, because it was helpful. Thank you.
And if I may also, that 95 gallons per capita daily, or GPCD here in Flagstaff, nobody in the state is that low. Flagstaff has done a tremendous amount of work to make sure that we're using as, as few gallons per day as possible. And the projections were made when it was 95, and now I think it's 90 even.
Yeah, we are under 90 as of two years ago. And again, we keep dropping every year. Just when I think, can it still drop? It does. And they're out there doing the work, and our, and there is work out there to do. We know that. But we're, we're chipping away and, the, you know, we're, we're waiting for the new regional plan to be adopted, and then we'll update graphs with that information. We did actually run a scenario with the ECONA estimated growth rate or projected growth rate. I think that was closer to 1.1 maybe. And these scenarios we'll share with council when we go into deeper discussions on making or taking actions on future water supplies. I just kind of wanted to demonstrate how we plan for long-term water. The Water Conservation Strategic Plan was adopted by City Council in 2020. Again, they wanted to be a national leader in water conservation. We needed guidance. How do we tackle becoming the national leader? Tamra will talk more about this. Here we have another chart. This chart assumed a 2.2% growth rate. That was an annual average over that decade, from 2000 to 2010, we experienced more growth. So we put that number in. And then we assumed a previous five-year average of 104 gallons per capita per day that put a new water supply out in the 2030s, so a little sooner, because we're growing faster. Then we dropped that 104 GPCD rate down to 80, our, our goal. And look how far out that moves a future water supply to 2048. So we just, this is, you know, we'll factor all these kind of scenarios in to plan for all these futures, and, and we don't want to miss the mark. And now I'll turn it over to Tamra. Any questions on the water resources portion?
I don't see any. Okay.
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Tamra Lalas. I'm the Water Conservation Program Manager. Going to try to bring it home, tell you some info about what we're doing out in the field in conservation. So as Erin mentioned, we have some kind of aggressive goals for dropping the gallons per person per day, and you'll see that we've had this really significant decline over time. I think the 2024 data was showing about 89 gallons per person per day, and that is across the community average. So that includes all of the commercial use. That's basically looking at all of the water used in the city divided by each person. So that's not necessarily what you personally use at home. The residential piece would be a smaller piece of that total. I, I did want to mention that, you know, there are some conversations about agriculture that we've had here tonight. One reason why Flagstaff is lower, I mean, other than we do have, you know, a very environmentally focused population that is focused on conservation, we also benefit on this number for not having a ton of agriculture in town. That can be a bigger use in communities that are growing a lot of food. So just one of those things to think about when we're talking about trade-offs, that if we did add a lot of ag, we might see that number, you know, creep up. Things change. When we did, this, this slide is not in your packet. When we did this presentation a few days ago for the Water Commission, they said, hey, we really love that one graph that you guys show. Sometimes it shows how the population has continued to grow, but the GPCD or the gallons per person per day has been dropping. And, you know, the total amount of water we've been having to treat is kind of holding steady. So I popped that one back in, just in case you wanted to see how that, the population kind of changes over time too. So a little background for, you know, a couple of new council members about the Water Conservation Program. So in the late 1980s, they, we passed a conservation ordinance here in Flagstaff. Some of the things that were included in that were some strategies that we could engage in, including watering every other day based on your address, no watering between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., so not during that part of the day where it's the warmest and there's a lot of evaporation, making sure that if there were leaks in place, that those could be addressed. However, back when that was first passed, it was essentially a mechanism that could be used if, if we were reaching a situation where we weren't able to meet demand. And that did actually end up occurring in the early 2000s. And we had to enact that every other day watering. And at that time, it was difficult for the public to kind of grasp, like this immediate change, okay, now we're doing this every other day. And so after that kind of crisis passed, we eliminated that first level where we weren't doing it, and we said, let's just make that the all-the-time procedure. So we're always going to do this every other day watering, and we're always going to say, no watering in the middle of the day. So that has done a lot to kind of reduce our peak use, especially in the summer, that we're, you know, having a lot of users alternating. And part of what happened after that kind of drought that happened in the early 2000s was they established some staff to actually manage these initiatives. So that's when the Water Conservation Program was kind of born. And so we have staff that are actually in the field looking for people watering at the wrong time or on the wrong day. And we have like an approach where we will talk to that resident and say, hey, did you know there's this ordinance? You actually, your day is actually not on this day. You do Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And we give out like a little magnet, and sometimes we'll give them like a hose nozzle if they need one. And then if they kind of continue to, you know, break the rules, then we can actually give them a fine. That does not often happen in Flagstaff. Usually it's just like a one-time interaction, and they're totally on board. What we see when people have repeat violations is it's often like a commercial business in town. We'll go in and talk to the manager at a restaurant and say, hey, your, your sprinkler's going in the middle of the day. And they'll, they might throw up their hands and say, I don't even know where the irrigation controller is, or corporate told me I can't change it. And so that's the situation where we kind of have to go back and forth, back and forth. Erin mentioned our 2020 strategic plan. So between 2018 and 2020, we did this really strategic and extensive public outreach process where we talked with, you know, all different stakeholders in the community and said, hey, we're going to try to step up the game on conservation. Here are all these different actions we're considering. Which ones do you feel like are the best fit for Flagstaff? And that was also coupled with a cost-benefit analysis. And so that's how we kind of picked the things that we're kind of focusing on during this next 20-year period. And that was approved by the council in 2020. So just to give you a highlight of some of the things that have happened since that plan passed, and, you know, just keep in mind, that was 2020, so there was a little bit of slowness at the beginning, in the middle of the pandemic. But we've retrofitted over 1,000 toilets, so putting more efficient toilets out, out in the, out in the field, that could be hotels, residences, schools, all kinds of places where those are getting changed out. 4,000 aerators, so that's like a little device that goes in a faucet and adds bubbles to the flow so that it feels like there's a high volume of flow, but you're actually using a little bit less water for every minute that the faucet is running. 3,400 showerheads, doing a lot of partnerships with local hotels. You know, we've got partnerships at the Aquaplex, just getting the most efficient fixtures out there. We've provided 725 rain barrels to the public, and these are in partnership with Joy Cone and the Cocoa Ops. So Joy Cone is getting rid of barrels that have like food ingredients in them, and then volunteers at the Cocoa Op help us make those into rain barrels and give those out. When people get them, they also have to attend a workshop where we talk to them about how to actually be efficient with your water use and try to convince them to do some of our other programs to like replace toilets and things. We've done consultations at commercial businesses and at residences. So these are, we'll go in person and walk through home or walk through a business, look at every fixture, and provide recommendations on how those can be improved, look for leaks. I mentioned that we have a team that looks for people violating the ordinance, so there's been 600 water violations over that period. So these are interactions that our staff have had with people in the field. And then we also listed that we've done 14,000 public interactions. That's just, we do a ton of tabling. We're out in the community, and we kind of tally how many people we talk to. So just talking to them about what does it mean to be a Flagstaff resident, and how can you conserve, and how can you be part of the solution? We know that this year, coming off, you know, a historically dry winter, a lot of people are going to have that question, right? They're going to be worried, what can I do? How can I help? And so tried to like come up with some, some excellent messages for how we can all be, be excellent community members. And, you know, just highlighting that we've done all that with just two full-time staff and three part-timers. This is our small team here, so, you know, like Erin said, small but mighty. Just some like ideas of things that we're going to continue to implement as we move forward with the strategic plan. There are code changes that, you know, we're considering, like, we're going to make some revisions to the plant list and some adjustments to landscape guidelines, especially, I mean, I think already we're seeing a lot of efficiency in new developments, but just kind of continuing to push that needle. You know, we've been talking for a few years about whether or not we should chat about adding the requirement for water sense certification to certain fixtures. So right now, Flagstaff already has a more efficient requirement for toilets. The, the state and the federal standard is 1.6 gallons a flush, and Flagstaff has to do 1.3 or lower. It doesn't have to be water sense certified right now, so the water sense program is part of the EPA, and they do efficacy testing of fixtures as well as efficiency. So they make sure that you're never going to have to double flush, that if you're, you know, rinsing your hair, the shampoo's actually going to rinse out. And so when we're talking to the public, we often say to look for that label. And some Sierra Vista in Arizona does require that certification for a number of their fixtures, and also several states have made that requirement. So something for us to kind of consider as we move into the future. We've been chatting about reclaimed water. That's been something that, you know, has come up to you guys over the past few weeks. So right now, a reclaimed water user is not subject to the same time of use restrictions. If you have a reclaimed water account, you could water in the middle of the day. So chatting about, does that still make sense? Do we want to have them not under the same umbrella where they, you know, aren't restricted to that time of use? I wanted to mention that we have two grant-funded programs coming down the pipeline. So one is a grant-funded program for income-qualified residents to get free leak repairs and fixture upgrades, so getting more efficient fixtures in the homes for those residents. And then we're also running a grant-funded non-revenue water audit program. And then we're also running a grant-funded non-revenue water audit program right now, which is basically, if you, if I could make it really simple and say that we put only 100 gallons into the pipe this year and then I look at the sheets and say, oh, but we only sold 90 gallons. Where did that other 10 gallons go? That's what non-revenue water is. It's figuring out how much of it was leaks, how much of it is issues with meters, how much of it was somebody pulled up their RV and hooked it to a fire hydrant and just filled it up with water. So been working hard on that. And then obviously we've had some rate changes, too. So that can sometimes change customer behavior and just observing, you know, how are customers responding to these new increased rates? So that was a quick overview of what my team does. Happy to answer any questions if, if needed or if desired. You'll see, like, we'll come in a month or so and talk about Water Awareness Month coming down the pipeline in April. And then like Lee mentioned, if anyone wants to tour any of the water infrastructure, if you're curious about plants or wells or any of that, we're happy to kind of host council members.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll be very brief, mainly so I don't start coughing all over the place. But I wanted to thank Tamara, Erin, and Lee for such a complete and comprehensive presentation for a new council member like myself. It gave me a very vivid and well-rounded view of what's happening. And for someone like myself who has also been watching these presentations for quite some time, I learned a couple of new things. So, so thank you for that. I also wanted to highlight that on one of those graphs in there, we were seeing that even with a lower population in the past, we were using more water than we are now. I believe that that's, that that's true. If it's not, please correct me. But, and, and with those kind of numbers lowering as our population increases somewhat, adds a lot of hope for the future as far as new technologies are concerned. When they come into play, how things are going to kind of reach an equilibrium with population growth, adding to that 100-year designation. I also wanted to kind of reassure my colleague, Councilmember Spence, that I, too, had reservations many, many years ago about the 100-year designation because it, it wasn't a, a question that could be answered real simply for, for the way I think of things and for my level of expertise in the water department, which is pretty, pretty, um, which is, you know, it's, I'm not, definitely not a water expert. But I, I wanted that question to be answered easier, too. And what it took was me digging in, meeting with ADAQ, meeting with our Water Services Department, and having a better understanding of how that metric is fluid, for lack of a better term, to some extent. And how it, it's, it's kind of beyond solid numbers, equations, I guess you could say. And, but the theoretical variance makes sense to me after having it, you know, solved for theoretical optimization over a 100-year period of time, if that makes any sense. So I, I, any, any help you need with that, David? I'd love to, 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 you know, walk that road with you and, and enter into those meetings with those folks. And we can do this together since we're both new at this. But I just wanted to mainly say thank you to staff for this very comprehensive and presentation and exciting news for the future of water conservation and technology here in the city of Flagstaff. Thanks again, thanks again, Mayor.
Additional questions or comments?
I have a question about how residents can request someone to come out and take a look. I mean, we hear from people who didn't know that they had a leak and then their bill jumps up. Or maybe there's just someone who wants to be proactive and look at that. What should they do?
Yeah, one really easy way is just to email our team at savewater@flagstaffec.gov. And we also have a phone number, 928-213-2116. Can reach out to us. Also, sometimes the customer service team, they'll get flags for when like a customer has a huge spike. And they will sometimes reference that customer over to us and say, ooh, this person might have an issue. Could you talk to them and, and come do a home visit for them?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, that looks like, that's it. Thank you. That was a great presentation.
I'm just going to mention that Emily brought you all one of our home water checkup kits that kind of walks you through how to look at your own house. So she'll come hand those out in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
All right, so next up, we have presentation and discussion on an opportunity to expand Housing Choice Voucher Program resources.
Mayor and Council, my name is Sarah Dar. Pleasure of serving as Housing Director for the City of Flagstaff. And, there we go. Awesome. Thank you for the moment to get oriented up here. Again, my name is Sarah Dar, Housing Director for the City of Flagstaff. And tonight I'm here regarding a request that has been made of us from the City of Williams and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We've got a lot of logos here because it really is a true joint effort that is being discussed this evening. The purpose of the presentation tonight is a discussion item. Not requesting action, of course, it's a work session, but we are seeking feedback and direction. I'll remind you of what we're seeking on a slide at the end of the presentation, mainly so that I remember as well. We've presented, been presented with an opportunity to increase the number of Housing Choice vouchers in our community by 50 via a voluntary transfer of the City of Williams Housing Choice Voucher Program. It's really important to note the words on this slide that say a voluntary transfer. This is not something that we sought out. It's not something that we asked for. It's not something that we sat and thought, what can we do? This isn't a take-over-the-world effort. This is responding to a request from our Oversight Agency and Funding Agency of HUD and also our neighboring community of Williams. We were originally approached with this concept last May. You may wonder why you're hearing about it in February. It's because there was a lot of work to be done and there were a lot of pieces to figure out. The transfer of programs, there are regulations that allow this. It's not something that happens super often. And so there were things for us to figure out. There was another transfer that was taking place within our state in the last, I'm going to go 24 months, probably. But it is not super common. And there were a number of things that we need to figure out as the City of Flagstaff as to whether this would work for us. I'm a City of Flagstaff employee. My first purpose is serving and the citizens of this community with the housing resources we have. We seriously consider this opportunity because it will increase the number of resources available in our community to serve low-income households with rental assistance. I'm going to talk about some terms tonight. I'm going to go over some quick definitions so that if I slip up and use acronyms instead of words, you're not completely lost. There won't be a quiz on this, I promise. But Housing Choice voucher, sometimes we'll call HCV. Sometimes I will still slip and call Section 8. It's all the same thing, a Section 8 voucher, a VASH voucher, et cetera. They are all vouchers underneath the umbrella of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. I'm going to talk about utilization and I'll define that as we go. But essentially, utilization is how many vouchers are issued and seeking leased up. But it also takes into consideration what our budget is regarding housing assistance payments. I'm going to talk about our administrative fee. That's money we receive from HUD specifically for the purpose of administering this program. And then housing assistance payment, you will hear me call HAP. It'll save us all time if I do that as well, instead of saying housing assistance payment. To call it HAP. And that is the money that is paid to the landlord on behalf of the tenant to satisfy the full rent. And I'm going to go over how the program works. I'm also going to talk about our service area, which is the area in which voucher holders within our programs are able to lease. Our outline is, is I'm going to give you an overview of how this program works. Some of this won't be new. This won't be new to some of you. For others, it will be brand new. But I also feel an obligation to the public that we serve to make sure that when we're presenting, that we're creating a common foundation so that anybody viewing this knows what the heck we're talking about. I'm going to go over some of our program specifics and Williams program specifics, how a transfer works and what transfers is specific. That's going to be fun. I probably will avoid that word coming up. Some transfer details and then the, the schedule that we're looking at. It's really, 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 really important that I say right up front that any current voucher holder that has been previously served by the City of Williams will continue to stay leased where they are. That they will not see any impact beyond changing who they work with, being our staff versus Williams. Folks, that, there's some details coming later on on the status of Williams program. They've been very upfront about the fact they've been unable to hire staff, afford to hire staff since September of 2023. So we have voucher holders in a neighboring community that are more housing insecure than just being a voucher holder because the, the staff hasn't been there for them to speak to, adjustments haven't been made, et cetera. As this gets out into the public, as people hear it and understand it more and more, it's really important that the folks currently being served by that program know and understand that this voluntary transfer should look, will look as seamless as possible to them and it does not jeopardize the services they're receiving. I include this slide and I called it people in business because I just talked about the people. I just talked about the voucher holders that are in the City of Williams. That's people. And we know that they are housing vulnerable. And there are heartstrings that pull at those of us that serve at the public, at our elected officials that serve the public. I have to balance that with brain. You're going to hear me talk like, like this is a business decision because it really is a business decision. How does it impact our community? How does it impact our programs if we're available to help? If we're available to figure out how to make this work awesome? But it has to work first and foremost for our community. That's the business decision I'm talking about. So when you start to hear things come out of my mouth that sound analytical or perhaps cold, that's because I'm looking at this from the perspective of overseeing and managing our programs first. But I want to say this, we all want, we all know and acknowledge that they are human beings at the end of the business decision that we're talking about. What I'm bringing forward to you tonight is not based on the heart. Let me rephrase that. Is based partially on the heart, but it's based on the brain. If this was a purely heart emotional decision, I wouldn't be standing in front of you if it is, if we had not determined that this will work for our community. So what is the Housing Choice Voucher Program? It is the largest affordable housing program in the nation, currently housing 2.4 million households, give or take, nationwide. It is operated by state and local public housing agency. That's us, we're a local public housing agency. And there's many subprograms within HCV itself. And I'm going to show you in a minute the number of vouchers we have and how they're broken out as well. So generally, this program serves households at 50% of area median income or below, meaning for a three-person household in our community, that's $45,500 for a three-person household. However, 75% of vouchers issued, meaning going to new households entering the program, must be issued to households under 30% AMI. And that's a household income, gross household income of $27,000 or less for a three-person household. So we are talking about very low, we're talking about extremely low, that's below 30, and very low income households coming into this program overall. In general, the program works this way. An eligible household pays 30% of their gross income as rent to the landlord. And this is known as a tenant payment. The housing authority pays the difference between that tenant payment and the price of the rent of the unit directly to the landlord. This is that HAP term I was talking about, the Housing Assistance Payment. So the landlord receives two payments. One from the tenant that is 30% of their income and one from the housing authority, which makes up the difference between a third of their income and the rental price of the unit. Now, the unit must be of good quality, meaning it must pass an inspection and have reasonable rent for the community. And we do have rent reasonableness guidelines published by HUD. And we have, of course, you'll hear me at times refer to fair market rent. Fair market rent is the value of a voucher. And so we have very strict guidelines. We, people cannot go out and rent top-end apartments that are not within the value of the voucher. Public housing authorities are allocated a certain number of type and vouchers. And then we're issued an associated budget that goes with that. Right now, we have over, I'll explain the plus in a minute. Like, how come you don't know how many? I'll tell you in a second. 530 vouchers in our community. 342 of those are Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers. Those are general purpose. They're meant to serve households that meet the income guidelines, but without any additional eligibility criteria. The other vouchers I'm about to talk about are called special-purpose vouchers, meaning they must have the same income criteria, but they are designated to serve specific populations. For example, the first one here, we call VASH vouchers, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers. Those are specifically for veterans. We partner with the VA on this program. And referrals for the use of these vouchers come to us directly from the VA. We have 40 mainstream vouchers, which you think would mean mainstream. Mainstream to HUD means non-elderly household with a disabled member. We have emergency housing vouchers. You may remember that that number used to be 29. It's 25 now because that program, when established by HUD four years ago, had a deadline. Vouchers surrendered at the, at the end of September 2024. Anytime after that point in time cannot be reissued. It's a diminishing program. It is meant to expire over time. I always have my fingers crossed because it's been so effective that, that someday Congress will renew that one. That's not how it goes. So as a voucher is surrendered, no longer used by a household, it goes back to HUD. It does not stay with us. That program, we do in partnership with the Continuum of Care, the Coordinated Entry Process. And we receive individuals, we did receive individuals to utilize those vouchers via the Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry Process. Emergency housing vouchers are specified to serve those who are unhoused, at risk of becoming unhoused, fleeing, human trafficking, domestic violence. Housing stabilization vouchers, five of those look much like the emergency housing vouchers, except it added in veterans as a category, but doesn't require folks to be vets to use them. So they really look and function like the emergency housing vouchers, with the exception that they don't have the expiration date. We have 12, 12 single-room occupancy vouchers for seriously mentally ill folks. We partner with the Guidance Center on these vouchers. And then we have, this is the plus sign, the Foster Youth to Independent Vouchers. We call these FYI. And we currently have seven. These are in partnership with the Arizona Department of Child Safety. And we can only utilize these when we receive a referral from DCS. They are intended to serve, not intended to serve, they do, they do serve young adults aging out of foster care or who have aged out of foster care. All of the clients within this framework are under 26. It is a time-limited program. It's only for 36 months, three months, how many months? Three years, thank you. And I, there we go. I neglected to introduce staff, I promised to do that. This ebbs and flows. When we get a referral from DCS, we reach out to HUD and say, hey HUD, we got a referral. Do you have money? They typically say yes, and then we have a voucher. But as young adults roll off of that program, that voucher is no longer ours. And that's why you see that plus sign or you'll see that number fluctuate a little bit in different presentations. So that's what we, at this point in time, are responsible for administering. This is a little more detail on how this works so that we're all on the same page. I'll walk you through this, I promise. The top box, that's us, PHA, Public Housing Authority, administers the program and establishes local policies. HUD gives us a lot of things we have to do and it says you can and it says you can choose some things, like you're familiar, maybe familiar with our local preference. HUD says we can choose that. Exception of one program, we get to choose that. They're okay with it. Over on the left-hand side is participant or tenant. Those are the households we literally serve. And then over on the right-hand side is the owner or landlord. There are separate agreements between all of these parties. It is truly a tripartee relationship. You'll notice that the lease is between the participant and the landlord. We are not party to the lease. That is between those two entities. We execute an agreement with the landlord that says this is how much subsidy rent we will pay to you for serving this client. We execute an agreement with the participant that says this is your rental share and this is what we're paying on your behalf. And that's the, the nitty-gritty piece. It looks a little messy. It can be, it involves a lot of parties, but it works. So I wanted to talk for a second about local impacts of this, of our voucher program in our community at this point in time. So the 530 vouchers equals households served, not individuals. So that is household member or total, total households, not individuals. We, yes ma'am?
Just to understand that, the 530 plus vouchers serve our households. Is that all the voucher holders we have? Are all the vouchers available out there and some aren't housed yet? Does that make sense? So you're saying, sir, so are those 530 households are in housing using Section 8 vouchers?
I will talk about that in just a second. The easy answer is yes, but it fluctuates monthly. And I'll tell you why in a second. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Matthew. Sorry about, I didn't go through the chair. I'll accept my beating later. We currently have 121 participating landlords in the community. That's apartment complexes. Some of those are mom and pops with a rental unit here in the community, et cetera. But we do have 121 participating landlords. And in 2024, just in HAP payments, the Housing Assistance Payments, we paid an average, if I round, $600,000 a month to local landlords in this community on behalf of Housing Choice Voucher Program participants. That's entirely money flowing into the community from HUD. It is not City General Fund dollars. Our exact number's a tiny bit lower than 600, 599,927,000 dollars that are, is flowing into the community to landlords on behalf of participants. I want to take a moment and recognize this is my very first AI-generated graphic because I couldn't find one that I wanted on the internet. And so I played with AI for the first time and made this little graphic. So I was going to put it with a little greener underneath it or a park, but I was out of free tries. So here you go. But it does say what I wanted to say. And that's, we're working on balancing funding and people. So utilization is, is a, it's HUD, so it's a formula. We can look at utilization as simply as the number of vouchers that are leased, folks that are issued and searching, et cetera. But the other thing that comes into this is funding. So housing authorities are issued a budget for HAP, Housing Assistance Payment. It's not based on the number of three-bedroom units or one-bedroom units or what people are leasing. We are given a lump sum and it is our responsibility to manage that along with the number of vouchers in our community and serving them. So there are times where we are what is called underutilized. And that is most often because we're running out of HAP money. We are a high-cost area. We have exception rents up to 110% of the fair market rent to try to make the fair market rents closer to what we're seeing in the market. And so it's our responsibility to manage that. We're paying more than fair market rent, which is the number that is generally utilized that establishes what our budget is in this area. But if we had a bunch of very large households come in that are renting larger-sized units, we may need to pull back on leasing so that we don't run out of HAP money. This is literally a teeter-totter and it changes. Why does it change? Well, because voucher holders will move out of the community or they will surrender their voucher or they're no longer eligible because they've had a large income increase, which doesn't make them immediately eligible. There's a wean down time period. People, that number changes and we can't predict when someone passes away or when someone decides to move out of the community. So in some months, we might have a handful and it's fine. And in other months, we might have more. And this is a great opportunity to introduce the staff that's joining me here tonight. Right here on the end is Charisse Barreto Aguilar, who is our Lead Housing Services Specialist for Section 8. This program, I personally, this program would be lost without this individual and the effort and heart and soul that she puts into it. This staff calls landlords and says, I know this is what your rent is, but this is what the voucher's worth. Can we, can we work together? Can we get there with that? That's why we're able to utilize and stay within our allocated budget mostly for HAP. And so next to her is Deanna Luhon, who has been working at our front desk but has accepted a promotion to become a Housing Services Specialist on our public housing side of the house effective in two weeks. So she's here in a crash course in learning. And next to Deanna is Alec Walsh, who is a Housing Services Specialist within our HCV program as well. These are the people that make the magic happen. These are the people that sit down with the clients and talk about how this works, how to, because it's a choice. You get to choose where you live. That comes with an element of personal responsibility. It comes with an element of personal effort going out into the community and identifying a place to live. So it's a careful balancing act. This is not the HUD definition. This is the SARADAR definition. A careful balancing act of taking into account the number of vouchers leased, our Housing Assistance Payment budget used in an ever-changing rental market where the maximum amount of voucher is worth is based on two-year-old data and federal budget amounts decided into, decided months into the funding year. Section 8 HCV program is budgeted on a calendar year basis. Sometimes it has been July or August before Congress has finished budgets. And so we are that far into the year before we know what our budget is. And so when I literally say it's a teeter-totter and they make the magic happen, it's what they do. It takes a lot of attention being paid to it. I want to share with you some local performance metrics. That utilization number that I talked about, which also takes funding and who's leased up, et cetera, into account is our utilization rate is, has been over 98% for more than 15 years. We're a high-performing agency. This is one of the reasons that we were considered for this voluntary transfer is because our program, according to HUD metrics, et cetera, is well-run and stable. 95% is a target for most. Our numbers show 98%. Now, some of those numbers vary per month. A couple of months ago, our utilization rate was at 97. The January, end of January numbers was at 100%. And when we look at the budget numbers, if we keep spending at that rate, we're going to spend 105% of our HAP budget, but we have reserves for that purpose. It's this magical balancing act. Do I think next month is going to be 100%? Maybe, but again, we don't know who's, who's moving, who's getting evicted, those types of things. So we have issuance to move-in date. So some folks call this search time, but it really is issuance to move in. So you become eligible for a voucher. You come in, you sit down with staff. They give you an orientation and a packet of papers. And then you go forth and identify a housing unit. You find a housing unit. You work with the landlord and it's called a RAFTA. I don't remember what it stands for, but it's the agreement. The landlord says, yes, we're willing to participate. Tenant says, yes, this is where I want to live. It comes back to us to do the work we need to do. The inspection of the unit, making sure that the rent is reasonable, et cetera. And then, once that piece is done, folks move in. This also includes any time someone who is currently housed may be giving 30-day notice and moving into a different unit. So our search time, 18% of folks from issuance to move in, 18% of those folks issued vouchers are less than 30 days. You'll see the number below, approximately 10% to 15% of folks lease in place. That means that they utilize the voucher in the unit they're already in. It just makes that unit affordable to their household income. And so that less than 30 days is, is fairly rare unless someone is leasing in place. 40% of our voucher holders from issuance to move in falls 30 to 60 days. So I wrote this down so I didn't have to math in front of everybody. That's 58% from the time they receive the voucher till the time they're moving in is 60 days or under. 38%, 60 to 90 days. And 4% up in the range of 90 to 120. Vouchers do ultimately expire if they're not leased. However, we have the ability to extend it. Sometimes we extend, if need be, up to 180. These numbers are for the last, for last calendar year. Previous calendar year, we had two households that went up above 120 days. It does happen. Search times are typically longer. Issuance to move in is typically longer in high-cost areas. We are a high-cost area. Other high-cost areas in the nation averaged only 29% leased at 60 days. We're at 58%. They increased to 44% leased at 90 days. And we're at 96% leased within, or moved in at the 90-day mark. So I want, I keep wanting to brag on staff because they truly do work their tails off. A success rate is the number of vouchers issued that actually reach lease-up. Why would they not reach lease-up? For a lot of reasons. Some folks decide they don't want to live here or they decide that they don't want to go ahead and look for a unit. It's not something we can control. This is where that choice piece comes in. But our, our success rate is 70% locally. That success rate nationally is 60%. So while it feels, when I saw that first, I was like, wait, what? Well, we're 10% above the national average. And again, there's lots of reasons, individual reasons that go into that. Our annual turnover rate at which vouchers that are currently leased free up, we're right at the national average. We're at 11%. National average is estimated to be 10%. And then the other key metric I was talking about is utilization of that Housing Assistance Payment budget. And we run between 98% and 104% of that budget. Are we worried about that 4%? No, because we have something called HUD-held reserves because they know this is a very difficult balancing act. What's our waiting list look like? Right now, we have, as of, this was due on Wednesday. So Tuesday last week, let's just say early last week, our waiting list numbers for Section 8 programs, HCV programs, was 2,506 folks. Of that, 890 of those households identified that they either lived or worked within our service area, which is ZIP codes 86001 through 86005. And so that's 890 households that have self-identified that way on the waiting list. The rest of those households are from all over the country. Average wait time to receive assistance varies. We do have the local preference I just mentioned above, except for mainstream vouchers. That was removed in the last six months. Our team worked hard to lease up the vouchers that we had so we were serving as many local folks as possible there. And our voucher programs have an approximate wait time of 18 to 36 months. And I wrote down a national average. National average waiting list time is two and a half years. So we're actually moving through generally along with the national average. I want to talk about service area for a minute. And I have some, I will use the mouse. Ta-da. I want to stop and give credit to GIS. If you were reviewing this presentation in your packet, these maps were not in here. And that's because SARADAR is not good at making maps. And I fought and fought and fought with online things. And over this last weekend, it occurred to me that we have a GIS department and that I could ask for help. And so Chelsea in GIS, when I asked yesterday, made me some maps to go in here. And so I really, really appreciate that support. And I'm ashamed that I did not think of them earlier. We serve ZIP codes right now, 86001 through 86005. You may say, wow, that out here says Winslow. And out here, I had her put Wapakia. Thank you for adding additional markers so that we, there was a reference point of how far north this goes. And then out to the, that direction west. It's hard to see. But if I blow it up, you'll see that there's a little bit of purple right there. That's Belmont. Belmont is 86015. And this is something I'd like to give credit to the Housing Authority Board for discussing. In fact, we have a member here this evening that brought it up for discussion as well. And that is, why don't we serve Belmont? When we don't serve Belmont, Belmont typically hasn't had a lot of rental housing, et cetera. Housing Authority Board said, why don't you guys take a look at that? Got the ZIP code maps. It's entirely surrounded by 86001. So we'll be taking back to the Housing Authority Board a discussion of, do we encompass serving Belmont? It would open up some additional housing units. I anticipate it's not bringing much more eligible population to the table because of, local preference allows you to live or work in the area. And so if somebody's working here, they would already qualify for that. Holy cow, it goes all the way to Winslow. You mean you're housing people all the way out to Winslow? No. Chelsea in GIS, thank you. These are all of the addresses in this region. And so while those ZIP codes are that big, I think we all realize as we drive out in the directions of these various places, you run out of housing. And these are addresses. This is not rental housing. This is all the addresses. So you see where they're clustered geographically. And you see that while some go all the way over to the county line, there's not very many. And in speaking with staff, there is no recollection, recollection of serving households much out beyond Townsend, Wynona, and perhaps a little bit more north in that direction. It's really, they're, the households we serve are clustered within our community, although our eligibility area expands much further. I'll keep moving. What about housing stock? Are people going to have a place to live? Thank you to housing staff, to building and planning helping with these numbers. In 2024, multifamily construction, not single-family. Twenty-twenty-four, there were seven hundred and twelve new units completed. Six hundred market rate and one hundred and twelve affordable. Currently under construction in our community at this moment is five hundred and sixty-four additional multifamily units. Three hundred and twenty-one of those are market rate and two hundred and forty-three are affordable units. Two hundred and twenty of that, two hundred and forty-three is with a project you are familiar with called Roars, out by Timber Sky. Given that that's funded with tax credits, those units need to be placed in service by December thirty-first of this year. So those units are not indefinite. Those units are coming. And I just drove out there for a budget meeting and there are the buildings. I don't go out that, that way often, and so sometimes, like, holy cow, there they are. From January of twenty-twenty-two until now, I'm going to say two weeks ago, there are one thousand nine hundred and seventeen additional multifamily, not single-family, units approved for development in our community. So back to the request. HUD and Williams have requested that we accept a voluntary transfer of the voucher program of fifty vouchers. Why? Now we get to the interesting parts of why. The City of Williams has concluded that this program is no longer independently viable in their community for a couple of reasons. One of them is the decrease in available rental units, given the amount of, the number of units that have converted from long-term rentals or ownership units into short-term rentals. They estimate they have two hundred and fifty STRs in their community. That exceeds fifteen percent of their total housing stock. Not their rental housing stock, their total housing stock. And so the decrease in availability has been difficult, but also the lemonade, limited administrative funding due to the program's relatives, relatively small size. Fifty vouchers. Administrative funding is paid on the number of vouchers you had leased at the end of the previous month. Williams has had their voucher utilization at or under fifty percent for at least the past two to three years. That means they're only getting about fifty percent of the money that it would take to administer that, those fifty vouchers at full bore. That number, if fully leased, is about sixty thousand dollars. It's not enough when you're underutilized and you have limited housing stock in order to run a program of this relatively small size. You saw the size of ours. We have a greater margin of error. Somebody rolls off the program. We have five households surrender vouchers in a month. We can handle that. If you have five of fifty roll-off, your admin is all of a sudden is down by ten percent. And then that's a much scarier thing for a smaller agency. And of course, smaller communities are, also have greater impact when that housing, limited housing stock converts to other uses because that, that number, while two hundred and fifty may seem small, it, when it makes up fifteen percent of your total housing stock, it creates a greater challenge. So a little bit more information about Williams. I did mention in recent years, fewer than twenty-five of their fifty vouchers that they have allocated have been able to be utilized. And they've determined that their rental housing stock in the community is no longer sufficient to support utilization of all fifty. And I should have advanced the slide because those are my talking points I said on the last one. But Williams has seen the decrease, of course, in the long-term rentals. They have not had staff in place since September of twenty-twenty-three. Right now, the best that we can figure out is that eighteen to twenty-two of those fifty vouchers are currently utilized, meaning leased. Why don't I know that number? I don't know that number because Williams has not had, had staff to stay involved, to know what that number is. HUD functions on numbers that are reported by staff into federal computer systems. So we're functioning on data from April of twenty-twenty-four, which has had, before we hit April, it was the same numbers month after month because of the lack of staff. We're confident that it's not over twenty-five. I don't think it's under eighteen. But again, we're talking about a fairly small number of households to figure this piece out. Demographic data shows that all of the voucher holders are extremely low-income except one household. That means under thirty percent of AMI. That one household that is above, I think was two percentage or three percentage points. They are thirty-two or thirty-three percent of AMI. And over sixty percent of the households are over the age of fifty. Why are folks still housed in Williams? Well, the City of Williams has been paying HAP. They have been cutting checks to landlords based on the amounts that checks had been cut previously. So I've been working closely with the city manager and the mayor of the City of Williams. They have been a pleasure to work with. There was some unexpected things that came up today. I'm not sure if they were able to join us today. But this is, this is voluntary. They're willing to come speak to that. And they are grateful that at least some, we're looking at a solution that could preserve some resources within their community as well as adding resources to ours. No maintenance has been done. Interim or annual recertifications have been completed since September twenty-twenty-three. And this is important to note that all utilized vouchers are leased within Williams city limits. They don't go up sixty-four towards the canyon. They don't go out, and that's mainly based on municipal water provision. So how does a transfer work? There's specific HUD-required criteria. And there has to be approval of the transfer, both from the surrendering and receiving agency. And then there has to be approval from state and national headquarters of HUD. Again, this one's bolded because it's, the HUD regulation specifically calls for protection of the current voucher holders. Timing, July one effective date. And then it also insists on preservation of leasing ability in both service areas, which would become one service area. And then I said legal, 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 because it's critically important. We're working with federal money, with federal regulations, with city regulations and city, our city legal team. I lost all my words.
Your fourth legal.
What's that?
Your city legal team, your fourth legal.
Thank you, yes. We're super lucky. We also have an external attorney that is working with our city attorney's office. She's online with us. Her name is Travis Harvey. She handled the only other transfer that's taken place in Arizona. So we're leaning on her because she's done it. And yeah, that's been very helpful. And so legal, legal, legal. There are legal things to be taken care of. How will this work? Those vouchers will be added to our voucher program. It will not be two programs. It will not be the Williams program and the Flagstaff program. It will be the Flagstaff program. We'll have fifty additional vouchers we're servicing. Their rental housing stock in Williams is limited, so it's really unrealistic to anticipate a significant increase of vouchers being leased up in Williams. And let's say, just suspend reality and imagine for a moment that the state returns local control regarding short-term rentals. Rental prices in Williams are cheaper. And so even if households chose to, people get to choose housing choice vouchers where they lease up, that's going to make our money go further because the rental prices over there are lower. So what would that look like for? Here we go, skipped one. All currently leased vouchers stay that way. I know I sound like a broken record, but it's important that folks know that. All unutilized vouchers will be issued, can be issued to households on our waiting list. There's a question about what about Williams waiting list? It hasn't been maintained since at least September of twenty-twenty-three. We've been unable to determine in partnership with HUD and, and the leadership at Williams, the status of that waiting list, how many folks are on it or not. But waiting lists are governed by time and date of application. And so when that waiting list is identified, we will do an interest confirmation. Usually we do this every six months. We send a letter out to folks on the waiting list saying, are you still interested in being on our waiting list? And they respond and they stay, or they don't and they go. And so we would do an interest confirmation with folks. And then we would merge that waiting list into ours based on date and time of application. But at this point in time, we're not sure. I'm not sure how to find that waiting list. It, it may exist in some software, but that's one of the pieces we need to pin down. All vouchers will be able to, this is a change in service area. I've been talking about, all vouchers will be able to lease up in our current service area and the city limits of Williams. Here's what that looks like. Williams is in yellow. Again, Housing Authority Board has encouraged us, encouraged us to look at enlarging our service area to encompass more housing units. Encompassing more housing units means it makes more folks eligible for local preference. A vast expansion of our service area, one, does not make sense geographically. Two, does not make sense unless accompanied by resources. And so because the Housing Authority Board has asked us to look at it, we will look at it. Right now Belmont, looks like it makes some sense, et cetera. The area in between, I can't answer that question because we haven't completed this, that analysis. This is all very new. In speaking with the City of Williams, their preference is that for the program to continue to function within their city limits. And again, there are some very practical reasons for that. Let's talk about money. It comes with money. It comes with all the money to utilize it. Again, we're bigger, so we have that margin of error with households roll-off, et cetera. But all of the voucher program funding from Williams will transfer to the City of Flagstaff if the Housing Authority Board and council choose to accept this voluntary transfer. This encourage, this includes both current and ongoing funding, the administrative funding, the housing assistance payment funding, which is the restricted piece of this. And the unrestricted balances are the administration funding, et cetera. This also includes the HUD-held reserves that are held on behalf of the agency. Those were transferred into our accounts. The addition of the fifty vouchers when fully utilized will increase our admin budget by approximately sixty thousand dollars per year. And the financial analysis of our own voucher program shows a healthy budget on the administrative side. Healthy enough that I asked Tracy French, our finance manager, to look at it again because when she showed me the numbers, I went, are you sure? We're not rolling in it, but it's healthy and we're able to sustain what we're doing. We're not sending staff to trainings in Hawaii. Let's just say that. But we are able to train staff, which is a privilege. What about our staff? We have a housing navigator that hasn't joined us here this evening, but this is our staff. So our current staff said yes. If Sharice had not nodded her head when this came up as a crazy idea, I most likely would have, I would have asked her why, but I would have stopped right there. The addition of the sixty thousand dollars will enable us to add a staff member. We have increased our voucher numbers year after year after year with these small allocations of vouchers you saw on the screen. We haven't significantly increased staff, which means staff is carrying a larger caseload. This will allow us to add a staff member to make, this is like the straw that made, broke the camel's back. Wouldn't break it if we didn't add the staff member, but yeah. This will get us over the hump to, in order to be able to afford this piece. So it will augment the funding necessary for a position. And it turns out, we're already administering VASH vouchers in Williams. VASH has different lease-up rules. We have three, four? Three vouchers right now we're servicing in Williams. Does that mean that our staff's going to have to go over there? It does. Do, do, do. All right. I'm realizing I left something out of this. Williams has offered us office space with Wi-Fi. And so we would have a place to work. We will not need to put a staff person over there. We anticipate once the cleanup work is done, that a staff person goes over one, maybe two days a month. Inspections are required on an annual basis and with any new lease-up. And so we can schedule those annual inspections over a time period of a few back-to-back days when we're going to have staff people over there anyway. And then go over to augment with any movements that we have. And we will have office space with Wi-Fi available to us via the City of Williams to, in order to, so we have a space to work out of and it doesn't inconvenience the voucher holders in Williams by having to come all the way here to Flagstaff to receive services. So there will be an accompanying IGA. If this moves forward, it will be very simple and speak to things like office space. So why would we do it? Well, it brings increased resources into our community. You saw our waiting list numbers. This adds vouchers we can issue to people on our waiting list. Increased service area for voucher holders to lease in. While the rental stock in Williams is limited, there is rental stock. There may be some households that choose to lease in Williams. There may be some Williams households that choose to lease here. And it preserves housing resources in the area. If we don't, this is not, when I say this, it's going to sound like a threat. This is not a threat in any way, shape, or form. It's a statement of fact. If this voluntary transfer doesn't happen, HUD's going to take those vouchers. And we'll lose them in northern Arizona. That's the heart side. Can't make decisions on the heart side, have to make decisions on the business side. But it would preserve housing resource in the community and add to our immediately local ones as well. It will, will, see, I didn't see ahead. It will increase our service area but not require daily staff presence. Here's the office space thing I thought I left out. They've agreed to provide furnished office space with Wi-Fi. And any significant risk to us will be mitigated, or we do not have to accept the transfer. So conditions of acceptance. We've insisted on being held completely, fully harmless, both financially and programmatically. Any debts incurred by the program under the City of Williams will remain the City of Williams. Any programmatic findings, things that have been done in the past in their program will stay theirs. Anything that is in our program will stay ours. This is one of the reasons it's been so long that I've been working on this is I did not receive a letter from HUD indicating this in writing until December sixth. And we had come to a stalemate where I said, I can't move this forward, HUD. I cannot go to city council and the Housing Authority Board and say, the very nice field office director, which she is, in Phoenix, has told us that this is going to happen. Like, I don't think our city attorney's office will even let me go to council on a verbal, yes, this can happen. I need something in writing. And so that's the held harmless piece. We're also insisting on technical assistance be provided by HUD for financial matters associated with the program transfer. We don't know how to book this. We don't be caught into audit issues with it. We would like guidance on that. And as well as the transfer of participant records, tenant screening, leasing requirements, and the associated cleanup with those. We would need some guidance on that. We have the ability to add other contingencies if need be. I know the print is small. I don't like small print on slides, but this is an excerpt from the letter in your packets. What the Phoenix Field Office was able to give us is a confirmation that they will request to HUD headquarters that we be held harmless for the impacts of any performance deficiencies or HUD liabilities. And that they will request initial technical assistance for a period of six months to one year from the date of the approved transfer to assist us with financial matters, et cetera. This was the compromise. HUD Field Office said we can't guarantee it. HUD headquarters, I've talked to your regional director as well, who said, well, of course, we'll hold you harmless. Again, that's verbal. This is what I have in writing, but we can make this a contingency. So if these conditions are not approved, we don't have to accept the transfer. Williams Housing Authority Board, which functionally right now is the city council, has approved the transfer of the program back in the summertime when we were discussing this. We've mutually agreed to hold a joint meeting with current voucher holders and landlords in order to discuss the dynamics, answer questions, let them meet our staff, help folks understand that this is a warm handoff. And Williams will host this, will go, folks can come, ask questions, et cetera. Most, if not all, of the current voucher holders in Williams are informally aware of the potential transfer as we've been getting calls for months from folks with questions. And I have preemptively initiated staffing requests. Again, not holding anybody, budget team, council, over a barrel. But that one has been, has been written up. Timeline. We started talking with Williams and HUD May-June last year. Had a Housing Authority Board discussion on January sixteenth. We're in front of you tonight, January twenty-five, twenty-five. I think that date might stick in my head. Going back to the Housing Authority Board, should council give us direction to proceed in this direction the first week of March? I think that's being scheduled for the fourth. For that body to consider approval of a resolution indicating support of city council passing a resolution, accepting the voluntary transfers with the contingencies in place that I mentioned. If the direction is to keep going, that will be back in front of you on March eighteenth. And we will turn the documents into HUD on April one. Sarah, why are you moving so fast after nothing happening? Well, because these transfers happen on July one and January one. And it is less than two weeks ago that I was able to get HUD's attorneys in LA, our field office director, Williams, our, our legal team and our staff in the room where we all agreed to the timeline. The first thirty days of that timeline is the field's office ability to put together the transfer packet, the second, and get it to HUD. The second thirty days is HUD headquarters consideration of transfer. They are encouraged to make that decision by the end of sixty days, which gives us thirty days to notify folks for HUD to transfer all the monies, et cetera, with the transfer date of July one. Once the program transfer is approved and finances are transferred, then we will start formal outreach, file transfer and cleanup. The regulation specifies that we cannot notify current voucher holders of the transfer until it's approved. I'm considering notifying and informing to be different because I wasn't sure how we come to a public meeting and we talk about something that impacts people's lives without them being informed of it. It's a public meeting. So formal notification, which is a letter that goes, that says this transfer's happened, will not take place until HUD approves this if they do. And so that's the, the piece of, we're working on that interpretation. Because I don't know how to have a public meeting without people finding out what's happening, nor should this be done behind closed doors. So I promised I would remind you, our purpose tonight, please, is discussion. And we're seeking feedback and direction. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. There are no silly questions. This is different. It's not something we've ever done before. I've asked a body to consider. So please, ask away. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. If you saw my pad here, it looks a mess because I had this huge list of questions and I kept scrubbing them out as you went through your presentation. So I hope I don't miss any. Just to clarify on that resident preference. I, I remember a woman came to me when I had my transitional housing. She goes, I have this voucher from Oregon. And you know, I, so, and you mentioned something about that too, that those vouchers can be used everywhere. But there's a resident preference. So if you clarify that, and I'm going to combine this one question with something else. Is a Williams resident? Because now we have fifty vouchers or twenty-eight because some are used. Are, would, if they came to live here, are they resident-preferred or preference residents and they live in Williams?
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, I'm going to take it as two questions because the answers are different. So there is an element of the HCV program called portability, which allows a voucher holder, the voucher's attached to a household, not a housing unit. So that household can take that voucher with them anywhere in the country where there is a public where there is a public housing agency administering a housing choice voucher. This term is called portability. And so we have some folks, and when they take that voucher to another community, we still pay for it. Now, we have vouchers in our community that are from other communities, and that community pays us to do that. And so, thank heavens for our staff and for our finance folks to keep track of these things. And so that's portability. So what you were finding is there was an individual with a voucher from Oregon that wants to live here. So we can serve that voucher. Oregon pays us an administrative fee and they pay the associated HAP, the Housing Assistance Payment, with that voucher. We have the option to do what's called absorbing that voucher into our books. We don't do that very often because that means that becomes one of our limited number of vouchers. If we absorb a voucher, it doesn't give us 531 vouchers. It becomes one of our 530 vouchers. So typically, we don't absorb unless we're needing to hit some other benchmark, which it happens very, very rarely that we absorb. Larger metropolitan areas, they absorb and transfer because they have interchanging communities, et cetera. More rural areas like ours, we don't see that. So that's the portability piece. Local preference, because our service area would extend to the city limits of Williams, yes. Those would become local preference individuals. So their local preference standards would change to live or work in ZIP codes 8601 through 05, considering including Belmont would be 015 and the city limits of Williams. Their population is just over 3,200 people at this point in time.
So my next question is, you talked about, and I probably just missed it, but if this still goes three, through, our department will get $60,000 in administrative, to our administrative budget to administer. But you also talked about, we have X number of vouchers, but we also have a budget to stay within. So we may only be able to issue 400 because we're maxed out because of the cost of housing up here. So are we getting more, an increase to our budget?
Yes. This program would transfer wholly. So the HAP funding associated with it, the administrative funding, the held HUD reserves, the local reserves, all of it transfers to us. And so there is, HAP funding is based on the number of vouchers you had leased on December 31st of the prior year. They're underutilized. There is a mechanism that HUD utilizes called shortfall funding in order to cover an agency that may have increased their utilization. We would be eligible for that. It's a process of turning in a, "Hey, here's our shortfall." I really feel, in discussing with others that have done this, that risk is, is low of that not being approved. If it wasn't approved, we'd pull back on issuing those vouchers. So all of that funding transfers, the $60,000 will not happen until all 50 of those vouchers are utilized. But that's the maximum amount. And right now, our voucher utilization between household searching and leased is at 100% in January. And so sometimes we overissue anticipating people to roll off, et cetera. So it's that balancing act. But yes, it comes with all the money.
So, just to clarify and restate, approximately 28 unissued vouchers would come over to us. You, you had mentioned that their record-keeping hasn't been the greatest since 2023. So we have no idea if people are still on the waiting list and who are they. So given that, with those 28 additional vouchers, because the other 22, 18 to 22 are utilized, could then be applied to people we have on the waiting list here in Flagstaff? And then they, they could utilize those vouchers in Flagstaff?
Mayor, Councilmember Williams, yes. And some of that depends on the timing of us being able to get that information, et cetera. But come July 1, should you give direction to move forward and HUD approves it, those, we would be able to start issuing those vouchers to households come July 1.
Okay. And one last clarifying question. You mentioned that people that have a voucher can use them in qualified affordable housing units? Because of their AMI, their low AMI, they still, they're following, they'd clearly fall into the affordable housing criteria and then they get an extra bump, right? Because they've got a voucher to help pay for then the other part? Like, it's 60 or 80% AMI for affordable housing?
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't, I didn't follow you, but I got there. So yes, voucher holders can lease up in the community in any complex that accepts or individual home that accepts vouchers. That's where 121 participating landlords come from. They, tax credit units house a lot of our voucher holders. Is it my favorite thing that essentially there's two resources going in that direction? No. But it is a way to make the program work because the rents, and it's not an extra bump for the clients. It's one of the ways tax credit programs help their performance pencil as well. And so those are eligible. They don't necessarily recruit, et cetera. But the rents and tax credit units naturally align with our fair market rents. Because of the rents, they're required to restrict their rents to certain AMIs. And so often, those units are the ones that line up with what our fair market rents are.
That's all I have for now. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for the questions.
Councilmember Garcia.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah. And, and please give everyone in your team a high five or a hug for me. There's a lot of talk about government efficiencies now. And I know every department at the City of Flagstaff is going above and beyond to do their jobs these days with everything that's going on. But your Housing Department in particular, I know for a fact, is, is, is working overtime and, and not charging for it occasionally because you care so much. And I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I fully support the shift in garnering the 50 vouchers without harm to the City of Flagstaff. I reviewed all of the content that you gave to us and it seemed pretty much a no-brainer on, for, for me at least. I'm really happy with the extra $60,000 per year, which could even turn into a new, another staff member to manage the extra work, which makes me feel good that we could be beefing up that department potentially. But the question that I did have, which I think you basically answered, is, are we going? So from what I understand, we're not going to necessarily be displacing those that are holding vouchers in Williams. They'll have the potential to move those over. But my, my question is, is will they have priority? So they'll have a seamless move from Williams? And then I'll have one more question.
Councilmember Garcia, I missed the very end of your question after seamless move. Could you repeat that, please?
I was just wondering if they would have a seamless move over here? And then I had one more question.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, those voucher holders would not be required to move into Flagstaff. They would stay leased where they are per their choice in Williams. They would have the ability to move to Flagstaff should they so choose to do so. But they've previously had the ability to do that through the portability piece I mentioned a few minutes ago in answer to Councilmember Matthews' question. Those voucher holders would not be required to move.
Okay. I think I got a clearer picture now. And that kind of nullifies my last question. So thank you guys for the hard work and, and I, I support this shift.
Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for the presentation. I think all of my questions have actually been answered. Councilmember Matthews, thank you for your questions. I think they, they covered mine as well. I did want to just acknowledge earlier in the presentation, you talked about how essential Charisse is to this program. And I had the honor of working with Charisse for many years when I was in property management and can attest to that, just how essential she was in, in making that a seamless move and a seamless process, rather, for getting people housed. I think my only lingering question in alignment with that is just knowing the extent of our waitlist and knowing the relatively limited number of properties participating in, I almost said Section 8 as well, HCV. Can you just reiterate that, like, we know that we can capture these vouchers? That, that we have the capacity to meet that need as well as the existing need within our community?
Mayor, Councilmember House, we're never going to be able to meet the need in our community with housing, especially our low-income households, given limited resources. There's no community in the nation that is able to do that that is a thriving community. Declining communities are different. So I, I can't tell you that we can do that. What I can tell you is that we have this number of housing units that came online in the past year. We have this number of housing units that are under construction right now and an additional almost 2,000 units approved for development. So bringing in 50 additional vouchers into eligibility, I feel, has the space to be addressed. The other thing to remember is local preference means that individuals that would receive these vouchers already live here. They're already here. Local preference means we're not bringing folks in from the outside. And so those folks are in housing units unless they're experiencing homelessness. They're in housing units in our community now. And so is it 50 new vouchers, 50 new households knocking on doors? No. It's households that are already within our community. Does that answer your question or did I miss the point?
Nope, you did.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. This entire presentation has been very, very helpful to understand a complicated federal, state, local program. I just want to say, I made my decision on this request before us very early in your presentation when you said that you polled your staff and they said, "Yes, bring it on." So I'm taking that as a very solid recommendation and I certainly support accepting this gift from Williams.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll make my comments short. Sarah, I just appreciate you did meet with me outside of tonight. I had questions and this presentation is great. Taking the time with me was wonderful and I am definitely in support of, of this. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
And I'll say that when we first spoke about this, I was so impressed that you were able to answer every single question that I asked because you had already asked those questions and gotten that information. And so your knowing this forwards and backwards, I mean, it's, it sounded like a good idea, but I was, I was concerned about liability, you know, all the things that, that you covered tonight. And so just kudos to you for, for investigating it so thoroughly before bringing it to Council. And just one point of clarification. Did you say that your staff was already stretched and that this additional 60,000? It's not that you need additional staff just for these 50 vouchers. It's that you were already needing staff, but this helps to actually hire that person.
Mayor, that's an excellent clarification. Thank you. This helps get us to the funding point where we're comfortable with an ongoing funding rate to hire that additional staff person. We've had those incremental increases in vouchers over the past several years and our current staff has absorbed those. Are they broken? Maybe. Are they failing? Absolutely not. But I can tell you, I, I do want to offer a point of clarification. It would be illegal if our staff was working uncompensated overtime. And so I'm not aware of any uncompensated overtime staff. But I, I do encourage them to make sure their time cards are accurate because there are extra hours to make this work the way that it's working right now. We've also had some staffing shortages in the past year, et cetera. Right now, it's fully staffed. And so this helps us, this is that final piece of like, okay. Yeah, we could do that.
Well, kudos, Housing Authority staff, for all the hard work you do every day. Sarah and your entire staff are just top-notch. I'm very much in support of this as well. So I think you've heard, yeah, we're good.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward for consideration and sitting through a presentation that is somewhat complex. I can't tell you how much it fills my heart to know that I answered questions as we go along because that's how I think. And I'm like, what would I want to know? Let's make sure that those are in there. But I by no means always capture everything. So thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity. We'll be going to the Housing Authority Board next week. I'll be back in front of you then on March 18th. Thank you so much for your time and patience. It's sincerely appreciated.
Thank you. All right. Moving on down. We have open call to the public. What? No, it's for open call.
Nadine Hart.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm glad that you're here. So I'm going to bring my concerns to you regarding, as a housing choice voucher holder and a board member on the City of Flagstaff Housing Authority. I've had my voucher for about eight years and asked the board for many years for assistance with housing placement for those residents with new vouchers or those in displacement looking for housing. The Housing Authority will do nothing to help voucher holders on the brink of homelessness. The board has been repeatedly told that there is excellent placement. It is up to voucher holders to find housing on their own. There are landlords who repeatedly rent to voucher holders. There are apartments who take certain amounts but are unfortunately at capacity. And the only way to attain that unit is if someone dies. This is on record at one of our meetings. That is not okay. There is still a very outdated apartment list on the website. Who are all these landlords? Why aren't those connections being made with the Housing Authority? I mean, they want to bring in an extra $60,000. That would be a good idea to help tenants. Why are they still not promoting the program other than Sam's Club cookies and coffee for current landlords at the Housing Authority? And by the way, my landlord has never received a thank you or invite after two years. So I'm not sure about that. I don't believe...
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but, and Ms. Hart, I understood that the comments you were going to make didn't have to do with the housing voucher program.
It, it has to do with me being a Section 8 voucher holder.
Okay.
Okay.
But everything is being geared toward the program and that was the, Mayor, I'm, I'm, that's up to you. It just seems like the comments are...
I was explaining my experience because we have a lot of black and white and I think it's important to understand what you guys hear and it sounds good on paper. But the lived experience and the concern is something that we need to take into account.
Yeah, her card says tenant placement, housing choice tenant placement.
Okay, and if it's truly tenant placement, then that's fine. It just seemed like it was getting toward the program itself, so. And I note the time was paused, so we can resume. Thanks.
Okay. So my concern is that we're not at 100% occupancy from my lived experience. And with the figures that were put up there, there's only 121 landlords. So it's kind of small. And we want to bring on 50 more vouchers. I don't need to remind everybody, we have a very significant housing shortage, like Sedona, like Williams. People with the housing choice program like myself, I'm battling the short-term rentals. I'm battling the influx of NAU as they come in and depart, which does significantly affect placements for potential voucher holders. We have a plethora of issues. We have a plethora of issues, and a lot of these apartments that get mentioned, yes, there is a section for affordable rentals below fair market, but within that, that wasn't mentioned, they only take so many voucher holders. So, you're within and within a bubble, and now we're going to have more competition. I don't understand why, as a voucher holder, that I can't have more of a picking pool. I mean, if we're going to go to Williams, why not Kachina Village? That would give options. That's not too far away. And why not make it easier on my landlord and staff? Let's do inspections every two years. That's a very great way to save money and give us peace of mind. So, I'm kind of opposed to the additional vouchers right now until the Housing Authority tells us as voucher holders what their solutions are going to be. How are they going to protect us? I haven't heard any of that.
Thank you. All right. Item number 14, informational items, too, from mayor, council and city manager and future agenda item requests, and I will start with Councilmember Matthews.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. I would just like to thank you guys for, you know, giving me the space to be homesick today.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm good.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I do have something quick here. I would like to have the council initiative fund brought back to our next agenda so that we can discuss a possibility of funding. Habitat for Humanity is doing a Blitz Build for their first 10 starter homes in June in coordination with Blitz Home Builders. They're bringing volunteers to Flagstaff. I believe there's around 150 of them, and I would like to help out Habitat for Humanity. They're looking for donations for food and drink and snacks during that timeframe for the 150 volunteers, and I think our initiative fund would be a perfect way to support this project. We've been on this path of getting these starter homes to Flagstaff, and it's finally happening, and I would like to see us support that. So, if we can get that on the next agenda and have the discussion, I would appreciate it.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. This past week, myself, as well as some other council members, were able to attend the Athena Awards, as well as, we had a very busy Friday, I'll put it that way. So, we attended the Athena Awards, we attended a county emergency management overview, as well as the mayor and I and Councilmember Matthews were able to attend the High Country Training Academy graduation on Friday, which was a great opportunity to see the new officers coming into our community, as well as the other communities that were being served by this program. On Saturday, I am forgetting, the days are blurring together, but on some day last week, I attended the Black Renaissance Gala at NAU, which is always a very fun event and was very inspiring this year as the focus was on joy and just finding joy in resiliency. Today, early this morning, I made the way down to Phoenix to attend the Bridging Progress presentation from Governor Hobbs, providing her 2025 state address for Black Arizonans. At that meeting, it was also shared by fellow members of the Arizona Commission on African-American Affairs that they hope to have a community forum here in Flagstaff around June. So, we'll be reaching out to figure out how we can best facilitate that. And lastly, I just want to remind council and the community that the Black History Month closing reception through the Live Black Experience is being held on Friday, starting at 5:30 at the Market of Dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
No future agenda requests. I would just like to alert the council and our community to the exciting 10-year plan for open space and parks and recreation. The two commissions met yesterday, and this 10-year budget plan has everyone on both commissions excited because there are a significant number of projects in the pipeline, and it's going to be a great decade to come. So, stay tuned for new parks, new open space amenities and recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember House stole a couple of things I was going to say, so thank you. You always say it so much better. I'd just like to welcome Officers Johnson, Fabian and Larson to the Flagstaff Police Department. That was a great, it was a great graduation. And the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living meets tomorrow at 11:00. And, hold on, on Saturday is the opening of the Youth Arts Exhibit at the Coquenino Center for the Arts, and that's from 4:00 to 8:00. And even if you can't make the opening, it's definitely something worth visiting. Students from all Flagstaff schools have pieces in the show, and it's just really an inspirational thing to see. So, that's all I have. City manager?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned.